Good evening, everyone. I will call us to order at five thirty six P M. And we will rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. It's the symbol of perfect friendship among united countries. That is a new.
Mrs. Turley, roll call, please. Doctor Ashambo. Miss Emily Hunt Daily.
Here.
Walter Hadameo. Mister Ron Ortiz. Francis Lee. Present, we do indeed have a quorum. Adoption of agenda. Board member, are there any? Board members? Are there any changes to the agenda? If so, what? Superintendent Widener, do you have a recommendation, sir?
I recommend that we approve the agenda for July eighth, twenty twenty five.
Excellent. Board members, is there a motion to approve the agenda for July eighth as presented? Thank you. In a second, please.
Second. I was waiting for guy, maybe.
It is moved by Mister Ortiz and seconded by Mister Hadameo to approve the agenda as presented. For July eighth. Any discussion, board members? All right, hearing none, we shall proceed to a roll call vote. Mrs. Turley, please. Doctor Ashambo.
Yes.
Miss Daily.
Yes.
Mister Hadameo.
Yes.
Mister Ortiz. Mrs. Lee. Aye, the motion carries. Very good. Mister Widener, our work session, sir.
All right. So our first item tonight under the work session is the update of our technology guidelines and systems. Um, we've asked Mister Isaac Tafoya to come and present on this. He, as you know, he is our coordinator for technology and working very hard on keeping us compliant and up to date. And so, um, Mister Tafoya.
Good introduction. And see, so good afternoon, good evening. Madam President, Superintendent, members of board, directors. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. Here to share an important update on a significant step that the district is in, um, taking towards embracing innovation and preparing our students for the future. As you all know, artificial intelligence, A I, rapidly trans- transforming the world around us. How we work and communicate, how we teach and learn. And in response to this evolving landscape, our district has officially adopted a new A I policy designed to guide the responsible and equitable and effective integration of A I technologies um, into our schools. So today I'd like to provide a brief overview of those key guidelines outlined in the policy. And how they will support our educators, protect our students, and ensure that A I aligns with our core values and educational goals. So that being said, have the guidelines that we can our new A I policy is built around five core principles. Equity, transparency, safety, work, and responsibility. And these guidelines are designed to ensure that our A I, that A I use enhances learning while safeguarding our students and staff. And here's a high level overview of the summary of whatever together. So number one, equitable access. We are committed to ensuring all students have their access to A I tools and resources. And this includes addressing digital divides, supporting diverse learning needs, and avoiding bias in A I applications. Um, number two, transparency and disclosure. Any use of A I, whether in classroom tools or administrative functions, must clearly be communicated with students, parents, and staff. Users should know when A I is being used and what it is doing. Three, data and privacy. Very important. Student data must be protected. A I tools must comply with FERPA and other privacy laws that we have to abide by here in the district. We only use A, uh, platforms that will meet rigorous security uh, and ethical standards, and we will vet all vendors accordingly. Educator, support, and training. This one's gonna be fun. I, I can't wait to bring this one to the schools and and, uh, maybe onboarding. We're gonna do some things this year that that we've been talking about, and we're gonna make it really happen with training. Teachers will not be expected to navigate A I alone. We are gonna be providing professional development and clear guidance so that educators can confidently integrate A I in a way that supports instruction without replacing human engagement or judgment, sorry. And engagement, I guess. Number five, responsible use and accountability. A I will be used to enhance, not replace, critical thinking, creativity, and personal engagement. We will monitor A I use closely and establish accountability procedures and revise practices as needed to reflect new developments. So this policy reflects our district's proactive commitment to preparing students for the world shaped by A I, while staying grounded in educational integrity, human connection, and community trust. I look forward to working with you all as we implement and, uh, these guidelines and shape a thoughtful path forward. That being said, I wanted to bring up some E, risks of things that we're gonna try to put into policy this year so that, I mean, one of the things that's gonna be changing this year is our password policy. It's gonna be a little stricter. Be a little lengthier, but I will make sure that you guys have the right knowledge and tools to, to navigate that and, and be comfortable using a stronger password. Another one that we wanted to touch base on is the use of personal email and personal computers inside the school networks. So I really wanted to put emphasis on that because it does tie closely to integrating with A I and using A I in the classrooms. And if, and there's a couple key points in here that talk about like our reputation, you know, community trust ties directly to that. And use of personal email is very risky in a, in a school district our size. And using it for business communications, it's big. No, no, we should not be doing that from any level in the district, down from my team all the way up to the directors or board members. We shall be using district email. We shall also be using our, our district supplied computers. And if you guys, yeah, we will make sure to provide you guys one if, if one is not available. Make sure that it's fully functional and we will help you guys and support you guys in, in all the use of it. So that being said, I wanted to go over some of the kind of an overview of this, the risks of using personal email data for education. In the past, I would have been like, well, it's not work related, it's okay. But even that, you sign in your email, district email to a personal device, and that personal device was compromised through a personal email, you can also compromise your district account. And we have safeguards in place like two factor authentication, which are gonna be those safeguards that we need in place in case an account is compromised. And we've seen that throughout the past couple years. A lot of, uh, fake emails, a lot of that stuff going on in our district. And a lot of that does derive from using your district account, personal devices, or going to websites that are not work related. You know, things that are personal and signing in with single sign-on with the district account. And those attackers, they take those, those systems, they compromise them, they pull data, and now they have somebody's, uh, email, or at least, you know, a part of it, uh, uh, hijack or spoof. And um, using personal email, I'm gonna read this a little bit to you guys. Um, you have the key risks up for them to follow along with. Yeah, this is it, huh? Sorry. Using personal email accounts for school-related purposes, especially when handling sensitive data or utilizing A I tools, presents serious cybersecurity, legal, and operational concerns. Such practices jeopardize confidentiality, the integrity, and avail- availability of information, and may expose the district to compliance violations and reputational damage. And that's why I wanna emphasize the importance here. And we can, you know, work hard on building this into policy so that we can hold us all accountable to this, uh, new standard. Um, one of the key security risks here, number one, data, data privacy violations. Now, this practice may violate privacy laws such as FERPA, SIPA, GDPR, um, which require stringent protections, not typical, not typically offered by personal email accounts. Um, that's just one point in there. I'll let you guys read these, uh, along with me. I'm not gonna try to read every bullet point, but I wanted read, you know, read out at least the couple of ones that are really, uh, I, I guess, like this weak encryption and security. Um, personal email providers lack adequate protections for sensitive student data. And we shouldn't be sharing especially student data or anything regarding, you know, work-related business in a school email because they are not managed and controlled by our teams. And we, we we can't control those, uh, which brings me to the phishing and social engineering threats. Um, it, it builds a higher attack plane, uh, surface for attackers to infiltrate. If, if we have safeguards on our personal emails, our district emails, introducing your personal email onto the district will, um, give that, it says here, like, personal email accounts are more vulnerable to phishing and lack enterprise-level defenses such as multi-layered authentication, which we have here in the district. And the expanded attack surface across multiple devices, home computers, mobile phones. This increases the likelihood of malware infection and credential theft. And if you guys do wanna use your cell phones, we have safe ways to do it. So by putting a works profile on that site and keeping your work and your personal site totally separate from each other. And, and that's how I balance the two. I love it. I think it's very helpful in that work profile. When, you know, if, if we wanna, this year, maybe make that a new standard that if you wanna use your personal email on your cellphone, don't just sign into it. I might even find a control to eliminate the the ability to even sign into your personal email on your phones and kind of force it through the work profile, which is probably a smart thing to do at this point if we're gonna try to roll this out. Um, A I integration vulnerabilities. With A I tools and security, sophisticated misuse, um, yeah, compromised accounts can be, can be exploited using A I-generated threats such as deepfake emails or auto-generated impersonation messages, which I got today from one of our principals. I know, uh, Amanda Valdez is not working at C E S and sending me a whole thing to fill out, but I got that, which I'm gonna have to it was about an hour and a half ago. So I'm gonna have to vet that in the morning, do a security audit, and see who else received that same email on everybody's inbox. And if anybody's clicked on anything, I'll be able to see that. We can reset passwords if somebody's gone that far, which I doubt. I think a lot of people are more aware and conscious of those, those threats nowadays. And those are gonna be part of my training. Cause I'm working with, uh, Technology Day. I'm gonna just keep reiterating these security uh, protocols and methods that we want our, our users, our teachers to, to use and and just be aware of those, um, you know, how to spot these, these fake emails. It's fairly easy. But if you're just looking at the high-level name in the description, it's easy to get caught up and start responding to somebody you think is at a high level in this district. So um, the lack of accountability, there's no audit trail with personal emails. No access controls. Um, so that's another big one. Inconsistent security policies, lax controls. Personal email platforms often lack mandated security measures like strong passwords and two-factor authentication, like those speaking about. And also the frequent audit that we can't control with personal emails. So that's another huge reason to start moving away from using personal emails for district-related purposes. Uh, loss of data control. Of course, that's a, another big one. Legal and reputational risk, um, yeah, potential liability, data breaches. Evolving, involving personal email can result in lawsuits or regulatory penalties. And erosion of trust. The public confidence in the school system may be damaged if sensitive data is mismanaged. Um, then we get to our A I data misuse. Correct, corrupt inputs. Insecure communication may result in flawed or biased A I training. And, um, model manipulation. Your malicious actors could exploit personal emails and inject errors and bias into these systems. And it's so easy for them to do that nowadays. So, um, unsecured communication channels. Um, yeah, that's, that's about the gist of it. I'll let you guys read up on those. And then I wanted to go right into the recommended best practices because we are implementing all these best prac- best practices. The use of institutional email only, which the one I wanna enforce this year to enforce exclusively use of school-issued email accounts protected by multi-factor authentication. Um, encrypt sensitive communications. If you guys have a sensitive email that has really sensitive data, we could teach you how to send that email with encryption through our Google platform. And it'll encrypt it so that only the other user is the one that's gonna be able to decrypt it, read it, and then it'll be fully fully encrypted throughout that transaction and, you know, throughout the internet. So we can show you guys how to use those, those things. Secure A I integrations. We wanna vet bigger A I tools through approved platforms like Security, which is what I'm gonna show you guys here in a minute, which we adopted. Um, type the district credentials. That's important. And if we wanna use things like Chat G P T, they have options and features inside of Security where you can integrate Chat, which is the G P T source code into our platform and customize it to our district. So it doesn't, so we tell it where to go with the information. So it's not just looking all over the internet like the Chat G P T dot com or whatever. And we could give our students a little bit deeper, you know, insight on on the A I use. But it'll still be safeguarded and something that's not gonna allow them to just pull answers right off the top. And then, of course, for our staff and, and our usage, be able to validate that as well. So we'll talk more about, um, Chat G P T later.
Question, what are you going to do about? Oh, we had to take the program to like, um, city dot, um, teachers, big teachers. Google classroom. What was that? Okay, seven. It's sensible. It's not, you can it, it did a district website. Those of us that live outside the district. Like you have to use their own personal content. Use that. Use the title. Does it, like, not, uh, don't pick up the B S C website and do that.
I see. And most of our applications are cloud-based, so you should be able to access them from any internet access. And so if you're using Usenet or any other internet access, you should still be able to use and access any of the platforms that we, um, provide to the district. If they're cloud-based, if it's at a U R L, we can help teach you guys. And shortcuts this year, we're gonna be rolling out what we call, um, it's a class link, but has that new launchpad, and it's gonna be tailored to everybody's roles. A teacher's gonna have a different launchpad than an administrator. And we're gonna customize those launchpads. So that'll be the one-stop shop that you have to go to, which will have all the programs a teacher needs. And if something's missing in there, we can add it on a whim and put it in there. Uh, like something like Teacher Pay Teacher, that's one of the sites I've been wanting to move away from. I know it's very helpful to teachers, but it's also one of those peer-to-peer platforms that are very sensitive and, and data breaches and also, um, you know, sharing, sharing viruses and stuff. So that's a that's a tricky one. We were suspicious a few times on where some of these add-ons have been attached to some of our browsers in the district. And I was suspicious that, you know, Teacher Pay Teacher could be a culprit, but we haven't proven that yet. So with stuff like that, we wanna be able to make secure. So if I can, you know, find a way to make it more secure to use it, then we will definitely go that route. Like ad blockers, that would be a huge one.
We know the path of difficulty, I actually remember we worked with it, it fixed. I want to access. This is my, I have to use my laptop.
Mm-hmm.
If I could use my, my, my board laptops ever.
Right. It was probably out of policy and needing a policy refresh. Sometimes if they're managed internally in the district, they need to be in touch with the servers in the network. So they stay out of the network for a little while. They get a little out of date on policies. And if a policy changes and your computer didn't get that, then sometimes those cause interruptions to your access and stuff. So we could try to get better at that as well on, on making sure we maintain a good connection. And even maybe a VPN would be more suitable for people that are on the network all the time. I can, uh, maybe get you a secured VPN that you can connect to. And then you can technically be on the district network while you're at home using your Usenet, uh, internet access. It'll be more secure. It'll be, um, when you log into that, you'll be talking to the servers on the network here. And so a VPN might be something we need to start talking about and, and looking into that avenue, too. We have capability.
There's some.
With the students, yeah, Chromebooks.
Computers can't be in the room. I'll have to get that.
If we're trying to stay on our toes with the students, for sure. So that we can constantly keep them in line and, and manage properly. So that has always been a challenge, but we have been, uh, well ahead of the game here. This year, we're gonna be bringing some new stuff, new tools. And I think that they're gonna be working really great for us. So we will work closely with you, Miss Daily, on all of your, uh, internet needs and, and application needs, okay? Um, yeah, so in the recommended best practices, I think it's right at the top. Um, yeah, staff training was last one. I wanted to reiterate that we're gonna be doing a lot of staff training. And I wanna come up with fun ways to do it. P D days, I'll work with the principals, try to schedule them out throughout the years so that we're doing them at least monthly with different schools. And maybe use onboarding as an opportunity to get in there with our new teachers and, and give them a little land and show them the landscape, what tools they have access to, how to use them properly. And we're gonna try to wrap up, and it's gonna evolve. We're gonna get better and better. It's gonna grow. And at the end of the year, we're gonna have some really great training. I have a confidence in that. Um, so let's see, I think that was the gist of it when it comes to email guidelines. The other thing I wanted to just share with you is the A I, um, that we purchase, securely A I. It's also our content filter. And it's our, where we have, uh, different features and, um, inside of Security that we got. And one of them is A I Chat. And this is gonna be our safe, policy-controlled A I use for, for schools and all ages. This is where we're gonna steer the students to using A I when it comes to their Chromebooks and at, uh, the first of devices. But, you know, we're gonna try to guide them with the district provided, uh, equipment to the proper platforms. And
Sir Tafoya, I have a question for you regarding that.
Sir Tofoya, I have a question for you regarding that. What is, what is? You know, during COVID and and beyond, everybody who had a a phone, a device. Could jump on the GCCS WiFi. What is gonna be happening now with these security proco- protocols? And students on their devices, because my understanding and. I'm hearing this from a fifteen year old student in the district that I know. But he he indicated that, you know, that regular WiFi is now locked. That the kids used to be able to get on for, you know, without. Logging in and and doing all of that, so if you were, if you were gonna get to that, I apologize, but I wanted to. You bringing up the phone made me remember to ask.
Great question, because I didn't have anything on that to touch base on, but. Students, we did lock down the guest network at the high school this last year, because we were having a lot of congestion there, and we're trying to troubleshoot, so. We found that a lot of congestion was coming from the guest network, because it was getting overwhelmed with. People's devices, Chromebooks that were getting power washed and never properly getting the new policy, so they weren't getting attached back to our. Google platform, and they were out of management, so they were getting on the guest network and um. A lot even the smartboards that were getting replaced by one of our vendors, they weren't. Let us know this smartboard was replaced, and a lot of them stayed off the domains, they only the way they could get on the network was through the guest network, so. That guest network was flooded with cellphones, smartboards, Chromebooks, you name it, and it was getting hectic, so we're gonna find a way this year to. Um, control it a little better, and we have a a little bit more um access controls in place and. And we're going to turn on the guest network again when school begins, of course, it's probably back on already at the high school at this point. But we're we're still gonna give them that access, parking lot WiFi is still gonna be available, that was something that. Um, I wanted to talk to you all and see if that's something we still need over, you know, uh that was a COVID protocol, we pulled out parking lot WiFi. For any students out in in the rural areas that didn't have access, they could drive to school and park in the parking lot and get on the guest network, or. Actually, if they had their Chromebook, they were attached to the Trump signal, which was a little bit more. Um, open for student use, because the guest network is strictly um locked down with. Everything that, you know, it's kinda tough to use the guest network, and that's another thing I wanna improve this year, I don't wanna keep it fully locked down. But through maybe school hours, you know, school hours, we keep it locked tight, but after hours, when we have events and people from the public are joining our network. They can use a a decent network that's not so restrictive, um, of course, it'll still restrict the really horrible. Things, but you know, we'll still find a way to open it up a little bit more for after school usage.
Thank you.
And of course, the students are gonna have, especially in Laguna Acno where they don't have cell service in that area. We wanna make sure that they are always able to access the guest network on their phone and. And use it, if they have WiFi calling turned on, they should be able to call in and out of that, and. And we're gonna, you know, make sure that that stuff's working better than than years past, with these new systems coming in, I have a. Confidence that we're gonna be able to improve a lot of that skills. It's tracked and reported, in fact, one of the features inside of our securely um filter. It's got AI chat, it's got filter, and it's got uh what they call securely aware, which I have already implemented in. Before the school let out, I wanted to make sure all our couns- counselors and principals were familiar with it. So I gave them access, built groups so that they could go in there, and they're getting notifications now for any. Search related content that the student types in there, if the student looks up uh, you know. Suicide, or any key words that would flag self harm or. Abuse, anything bully is another huge category that, you know, we they'll be flagged, it'll be sent to their principals or counselors. I'm trying to set up different groups, it's gonna work way better than Go Guardians, Go Guardians was. Turned on and sending just a flood of red flags that were mostly false flags. This one that we have a little bit more granular control on the severity, the. They call it um, I guess, competence level, and I could set it higher, I could set it low depending on how much false flags we're getting there. And it's already been working very well, I've already had contact with a few principals last, you've seen some searches tied to some young students in. Uh, elementary schools, and it was alarming, so that's when I said we need to roll this out before next year, because I already seen that when we turned it on. Students were already getting flagged, and I was the only one seeing those, so I tried to get those communications to our principals. And they followed up with the families and students where they needed to, and it really did uh, you know. Put out that fire hopefully before it started, because there were some some real flags, not not false flags in that instance. And we're gonna use that tool to better control, manage and and monitor our students' uh access to the internet and the AI tools. That, you know, it's gonna track every every chat that a student has with AI. And it's gonna document that and and record it, so that we can pull that back and and um have access to. You know, logs of of that data and stuff, that's gonna be huge.
Most of the things that are happening are outlining community, but I could never get them to, what you say. Every Tuesday will be out there, and every Saturday, you know, for that reason. The the issues may be addressed immediately, instead of waiting for the thirty minute drive from here.
Right. Yes. Yes. Tools this year that are gonna give us access to, I mean, we've had some remote tools in the past, these new ones are gonna be a little better. And we're gonna be able to, you know, remotely support, our our office is also expanding, we're getting a few hands on deck now. And um, so we're gonna have more hands, more techs to send out and service instead of, we've been dealing with two for so long, sometimes we have three, but. We've never been able to hold on to three or four, which is a good number for our technicians, because we have ten schools. And a lot of administration buildings to to attend to, but we're gonna try to be more attentive to their needs, and if there's an immediate need, we will be on top of it remotely. And or, you know, having a tech in route over there, and with those new tools, a new a new help desk, it's gonna be one of our. newest uh new work order system, it's not so old and archaic, it's gonna be easier to manage, easy to follow, people are gonna have a better time. Getting into it and putting, you know, reporters in, and it'll prioritize them for us, help us. You know, hopefully do what I'm hoping is gonna be, you know, twenty four forty eight hour round for. And then elevate the ones that are high priority to within within a couple hours, so we're gonna address that need especially. And, you know, especially out there in rural areas, it is a good long drive to Central Yidda. Right, and that's what our new remote tools will give us access to doing a remote session with you. And actually controlling your screen for you or guiding you in that sense, click on this and we could put arrows where we want you to click, and. That'll be huge, because now that we have fiber optics to the schools, we're all are no longer bound to those old T one connections that were so slow, you couldn't even do a remote session. Instead we had a um five years ago, you know, now we're capable of doing remote sessions throughout the entire district. As if it was a a gig connection back to our data center, they're all fiber fed at this point, which was a a very. Huge deal accomplishing that task, that was years and years worth of work to get fiber optics to all our schools. And now that we have it, it's uh these tools that we're buying now are gonna be over the fiber optics.
We'll be able to have board meeting.
Yes, yes, in fact, there's something I need to talk to Cooper about with that mobile. Word station that we that we're buying for for mobile board meetings, so yes, that would be great, and. I hope that answered your question, and yeah, we're gonna work hard, and if you guys have any any thoughts or. Plays or notice something's not working at the level that I'm trying to get it to, let me know, I'll make sure to be on top of it. ASAP, we'll troubleshoot why it's not working at the level that we're expecting it to, and we'll get it there. You know, our new access controls and new work order system and new systems that we have to access the internet. Fiber fed, I mean, I I bumped up all of our WANs this year to up to a ten gig connection if needed, so if we need to, we can. Turn the switch, pay a little bit more for internet access. WAN and we'll have a a two gig connection up to seven needed, you know, but they're a small school, so we shouldn't need that right now, but we'll play that by ear and. Elevate any connections that need to be saved, and here at the high school, we're in the middle of a fiber project right now, that's gonna bring the local. Area network in the high school and here at Central up to ten gigabytes back to the data center. So your bottleneck now is gonna be your five gig internet pipe that's in the data center, which I wanna bring up to a ten gig pipe now. And then we'll have ten gig internet access, which is is huge, it's gonna be phenomenal, um, I can't wait to to roll those into place. So, let's see, what else can I share, I mean, I hope you guys go over this uh flyer, I don't wanna read it word for word, but it's got a lot of good information in it. The security uh AI chat flyer, and I believe there might have been another one I shared, I don't know, but. We could try to share them in a email with everybody, even district, I wanna work a lot harder on policy this year. We're trying to, you know, improve our policies and really lock down not just passwords and and. Email accounts, but we want to do good things with automation and user account creation, we want that to be seamless and. You know, very functional, we we don't wanna be holding up people that have been hired here at the district and they're waiting for two weeks to get an account. We want that to be a twenty four hour turnaround, just starting one system and feed all the others, which is what we're working on right now to try to get. You know, some really good things happening in the district. So, are there any other questions, I don't know if I've hit all the touchpoints on securely and AI. I'm excited to adopt it, I've been trying to use it lately and get more familiar with it, our teachers are gonna be in love with their new smart boards, they have AI integrated into it's uh. I forget what this one's called with the one screen, but a teacher, what's it called, Scribe, thank you, Scribe. That teacher could be up at the front of the classroom giving a presentation to the classroom, and at the end, they hit a button. It transcribes their entire lesson they just gave, and it could create quizzes based on whatever they want, they want true and false question quizzes based on that. You tell it how many questions and boom, it'll spit out a theme with multiple choice answers, and then you could go through that and the teacher could say, oh, well, tweak this one a little, tweak this one a little. You just did something that would have taken you days to complete or hours and trimmed it down into a few minutes. And we're gonna try to guide our teachers and help them understand all this technology as well.
Because that happened this um, last year. Most of our. Were the our computer generated. It's kind of the students were, they did it for this, they were using their phone to expect their test. Then it, I don't know what AI group were, and they got the answers to the, to my quiz, and I thought, oh, are they doing it? When I made up the quiz, it's not out there floating around.
Right.
It was.
Interesting.
So they they were able to get the answers to the quiz. Well, a party got caught cheating, so.
Yeah.
Zero anyway, but they're they're able to do that through AI.
Mm-hmm, and that's why we wanna manage and control it and not give them access to the open source ones that are on the internet, we wanna. Filter them and funnel them to the ones we're providing that the district owns and tailors to their to the content we wanna give them, so if a student. Says, AI, write me a a yeah, a report or um, what am I looking for, you know? Yeah, and it'll spit out a report for them, and they just copy and paste and turn it in.
Yeah.
But this AI will actually guide them and tell them, okay, and it'll ask them questions to build a thesis, to build a, you know, to build the whole body of the thing, and it'll help them. Guide them into writing it by asking them the right questions instead of giving them the answers, and that's what our goal is here, and we're gonna be able to. Also give teachers the tools that they need to show that, hey, this work was, they they can put it in the AI tools that we're gonna present them. And they'll be able to cross reference and check that work and say, oh, that's that's seventy five percent AI, you know, that's uh. Hundred percent AI, or, hey, yeah, this is hardly any AI is detected at all, because we want our students to use it, but we want them to use it in the proper way, so if it shows up as. Twenty percent AI, that means they got some content from AI, but they put their own efforts into building. The assignment, or, you know, not just getting answers from AI, because that's what we're trying to prevent with this managing and monitoring of of AI.
And Miss Daly, was that it, the school site where you were teaching, so not our GCCS? Okay, I just. Right. For the audience.
That's why there's other things that we do still need to think about, like they have access to a personal cellphone, we can't manage and control that, and if they're using those devices. How do we manage that if we block down our internal network and close the guest network, but they all still have access to their. Origin, so that's gonna be a protocol that's gonna have to take place at the school level and taking phones away or putting them away while they're doing work. I don't know, that's that's a tricky one.
Lost their lives, because they didn't know that there was an emergency, because they they took their phones away from the kids. They didn't get the mental.
It's in policy, I think we can all all count for that aren't following the the policy and. And once people start seeing that, you know, we're holding people accountable, seeing the last people change, people start following the rules and and making sure we. Are doing what we're needing to do for a good sake, because this really is for the students, I'll fill them and not give them, you know, free access to something that. Could be, you know, dangerous and and giving them, you know, it's. Turn them off, they're only there for um security purposes, not for communication during school, I I think that's a huge one that they're gonna have to. Embrace.
In that vein, are you able to see when kids are accessing their. GCCS emails and classroom and everything off of a personal device versus. Them accessing it on, you know, their district laptops, the and. Miss Daly with her, you know, talking about these kids are gonna find it anywhere, are you able to see? Our teachers able to see if, you know, little Jimmy Joe. Writes his whole paper on his phone using AI and then emails it to himself and then pulls it up on the district email. You know, is there a way that there's traceability for accountability on that?
If they're using their district email on the cellphone, yes, if they're using a personal email.
No.
No.
Right.
Unless they're sending it to their district email, then there's a trail there, and we can definitely see if we can find some controls on on uh. That's that's a good thought, that's, yeah, those are the tricky little things that we're gonna have to figure out to keep up with the students and uh.
If you were to put a title at the top.
Which piece, the? That, um, AI. Usage and and guidelines at the top of, which one though, the email one? Or the this one right here, that would be securely, securely AI, um. I I guess, I don't know, I won't really, I don't know, a great title other than securing AI, um. Yeah, we'll definitely work with our teachers to help them understand what to put in these uh AI platforms and what not to put in there, because there's data you should not be putting in AI. Regardless.
This presentation that you did.
Thank you.
Reason I mentioned this was that, I, when I. When I, as I look at this. I'm looking for its mission, purpose, so I mean, there's something in here. That tells me, what is this all about? What is it for?
I would say in that case, to safeguard and and help manage and control our students' access to the digital world.
Well.
And and especially AI.
First paragraph tells us. It says, this is all about. Ensure that AI use enhances learners. This is all about enhancing students. That's what this is. Everything that we're doing is trying to. To help the students in this complex world area. To to increase their their data fidelity, to acquire knowledge, skill, pace, that's what this is. That's what this is all about. Primary. The secondary purpose. It's all setting difficult defining was to enhance instruction. So I'm looking at this in terms of those two purposes. And trying to figure out which of, how do we monitor and evaluate? That, that we are, that we are implementing. A program of AI, artificial intelligence, and soon this is.
Yep, artificial intelligence.
To again, so how are we monitoring and evaluating this? And, and you say that, and you say there are five principles. And each of these principles are meant to enhance learning. And the fine, it says. I'm looking for the concrete things that you're going to do to make sure that this works.
I see.
So you have to figure out. You have to conceptualize what a management plan is. How do you monitor its implementation? Obtain the information on a continuous basis to determine whether or not you are getting equity, transparency, transparency. Educator support. These, these all require you to collect, uh, five different. Uh, areas of information to, to, to determine whether or not it's working.
Right.
That's what I see. That's what I'm looking at. Four months down the road. In October, we ask you to do a report. Would your report consist of? I would suggest that we. That you think about it in those terms is what am I going to report to at that point in time? Or at any time during the three, four months, if we remember, uh, or anybody, you know, asks you a question. About how things are going, you already are, are developing the, the, um. Need, uh, acquiring the information to tell you how things are going. And that's really important, because we're all new to this. And we don't, we don't know. We'll rely upon the department to. To help organize a report that, that identifies. Progress, strengths, weaknesses, stuff like that.
Okay.
That's the kind of thing, so if you ask for a report. We should already have, begin to develop in the next month or so, an outline of what that report would consist of. And then at the end of the year, or mid-year, you would have another report. And if, if we show desires, if it's the administration, because we'd like to see, you know, how it's going. You already said, I know what I'm gonna report on.
Yeah.
And so, and so, and also if things come up and things have some urgency. You already will have prepared your report that tells you that, that, um.
Yeah, that's great.
That's all I'm suggesting. Otherwise, uh, very informative, um.
Good.
In many, in many different ways that I, I will never understand totally. So.
Yeah.
All, all of your, your court.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback, cause I will definitely take it into consideration and start devising a plan, cause I would love to create a report. Show you where we're succeeding and where we're failing. So where, you know, and I think policy is gonna be a huge factor in this. Which is why I really wanna put a lot of my time and effort over the next few, uh, weeks and months into writing these policies. Cause it's, it's, there's a lot that is not in policy that we're trying to hold people accountable for. And it just doesn't happen. And I really wanna be able to hold them accountable and say, hey, look, this is a policy. I can, uh, you know, I guess talk to your, your supervisor, principal, cause you're not following the policy. Cause yeah, it's gonna be huge that we follow these guidelines in order for this to be, like you said, enhancing their learning outcomes and not giving them a free ride to a. To an A plus on that assignment. We want them to learn. We want it to enhance their learning even better than without AI. We want it to be a tool that they can. Utilize and, and become better after using it. And. That's the goal here and, and I'm sure there's gonna be controls. It's new to our team as well. We're trying to embrace it, learn as much as we can right now. So over this next, you know, few months, we're gonna learn a lot ourselves on what we can monitor and how we're gonna be able to control this, um. This usage and then of course, you know, put together a, a report for you all, so we can show you guys where we're succeeding and where we're failing. I, I love that. So thank you for that information. I'll take that.
I have a comment. Uh, like I said, one, you could get a hundred flags, but at least you'll catch that one, you know, like, you know, suicide prevention, like I said, um. One of, one of my kids had a student, uh. He lost his student on his clock or, but, and he just wished that he saw that flag, you know, just didn't see it, like you said, so. You get all these false flags, but you never know, you never know. You knew you get those flags in there and you find them. And like I said, if you had like a study, then you'll say, well, these are how many kids are cheating. You know, well, no, you know, and I don't think they are like Miss Daly says, you might have maybe two in your classroom or maybe five in your whole school. That will try and pull a fast one like that.
Figure it out to get.
Yeah.
And with this data, like Guy says, we might know, you know, well, how many kids are actually trying to pull a fast one.
Right.
Or teachers.
Security aware is gonna get very nicely with the eyes. Be aware.
No, no black hats, only, only my.
No, no, but I'm just saying that, you know, we're all learning this and, and, you know, you get flags, you gotta look at them. You know, even if they're false flags, you still gotta, you still gotta, you still gotta, how do you want to, you still, you still wanna.
Right.
Well, I think, I think the biggest thing.
Still wanna harvest them. Still wanna harvest the information.
Yes.
And I know, uh, Guy was talking about the. Mr. Jones, will you scroll back up to your top paragraph on this, sir? I know that Guy was talking equity, transparency, safety, support and responsibility. And, you know, that's really important. But I think the, the biggest word here that I'm really interested in and wanting to focus on is the safeguarding. You know, and that's, that was the big push for us to get some type of policy started. So that we are able to have that, you know, stepping stone to. The next thing that you need and the next thing that you need, because it is ever evolving. But safeguarding is just, in my opinion, paramount on this and i- it falls in line with what. You know, Mr. Harumio was just saying that we've got to, you know, be keeping an eye on. Thank you very much. Did you have something you were gonna add, Mr. Ortiz?
No.
And administration has to, and here too. If it's not going to work, we're going to have somebody say, oh, well, my other teacher let you from the cellphone. And that goes dismissed without a write-up or a fraction. It's happening all over. I worked with Mesa and that was given after. The governor banned cellphones in the school. Middle of law, uh, professional law. Went to school the next day and they were still using the cellphone. You, you don't, you can't even use that. To scare the student or to tell them, you just didn't leave these against them all.
And they use the excuse of, it's my safety lifeline, because if we had a, uh, an event, you know, in this district that locked them down, that's their. Communication, so that's their leverage that they've been using, but we need to. Reiterate the, the protocols that we've put in place for security and safety with the new systems, the new door controls. It is a hundred times more foolproof than our previous system, but this one's safeguarding every external door access to these schools, not just one or two. Where we were leaving, you know, holes for them to, I'll leave that prop open while we're outside. We're leaving open doors at that point. We're breaking our own security measures that we're trying to fix.
And we should pick and choose which ones we're not going to follow. Sorry, I remember sitting in the back being not too wonderful, where the principal said, well, I don't, I don't, I don't. Of course, there are no, uh, gentleman's, that's a bad way to want to fight. You just thought, well, then you're not gonna do, then you just hope to disperse everybody out, not follow yet, try to follow. And, and our, well, our, well, this, and we have, we have one teacher that's not, uh, that's allowing it, then. The next teacher's gonna follow and raising the rule is useless.
Yeah, and it also works in reverse. If that one teacher that started that got reprimanded and, you know, they.
Accountability.
You know, accountability, that's it. Then, then the rest of them are like, okay, I don't wanna follow that, so they follow fine, instead of, okay, let's all follow. We, we're able to get away with it.
And that's what she's saying, is we just gotta stand behind it, stand behind our policy.
That's why I was saying, I think that's gonna be our most important first step is writing these policies, make sure they're ever evolving, every three months revisited, make sure we. Fill in those gaps where we're failing and, and write more policy to help us build that up, cause I, I think that's gonna be our key. To making this successful, cause yeah, we could, we'll wanna do what they wanna do. And if we don't have something in writing stating that they cannot do this, then it's, it's gonna fall apart. So I agree with that. I think policy is gonna be our most important first step and then we'll continually revise them. If we have adopted a new policy now, I wanna say we're gonna be revising it and adding to it within, within this year sometime, so that we can make it stronger and. In a couple of years from now, we'll have a very strong policy. It's a policy that other districts are gonna be wanting to help, uh, steal from us.
That's what I says, as long as we have like a paper trail of what we're doing, then we have, it's working.
Yeah, I wanna be able to, of course, you know, manage all our systems internally, cause that's another huge security risk and. Data privacy, we had some issues, you know, three times this year that we couldn't pull from our security cameras that. Our previous vendor installed, because we don't have access in the IT department to managing those systems. They weren't on our domain. They were. You know, max out hard drives. They weren't even recording data. So when we went to go pull data off of that break-in, basically we couldn't get nothing. Um, another one happened. We couldn't get nothing there, cause that one had a different problem that was out of management. It wasn't being managed internally. It was being managed by external force. That didn't have a, a care or a, um, you know, an investment in this community and in this district. And that's what my team has and I, I'm super happy that we're involved in this new rollout of security systems. Jeremy is very excited to work with us and it is already working out a hundred percent. It's rolling out faster. We're able to. Import our users into it faster. Instead of doing manual entry, we're, we're knocking this out a lot quicker and it's gonna be, we're gonna be able to manage and. If we need that data in two years, like, we're gonna have it. And we're just making sure internally that, hey, if that data is gonna be archived in the cloud for a certain extension. And we wanna hang on to it for years, I'll pull that out, put it on a server internally and archive it there. So that we can have access to that, uh, years from now, instead of. You know, and, and that's gonna be the same with this AI, uh, data, all the data that this stuff collects from our students', uh, research. It's all gonna be documented and. And logged, so that we can pull that up. AI and the securely aware will be helping us. Those tools are gonna be phenomenal. I can't wait to show them to you guys in action, so that you guys could see the power behind them. And I can't wait to see the power behind them this year, cause I know they're powerful, but I haven't seen it fully in action just yet. Until this, this coming year. I'm very excited for this year, cause this year we're, we're getting a lot of, um, support and a lot of tools that are. Long awaited for, and I think it's gonna be a great addition to our district and.
Perfect.
Just happening as well, so I hope I've given you guys, uh, a great introduction to our guidelines of AI and I hope that you guys. Are able to understand my tech lingo. Sometimes I know I can talk tech and I hope I.
Like Guy says, it's nice to hear from the horse's mouth sometimes. Brings us behind the seeds.
And I'll continue to, not just inform and train our staff, but you guys as well, wanna do personal trainings, we'll. Schedule time with you all too, so you guys can learn how to use some of these new tools as well.
Thanks.
So, and Miss Daly, same with you and, and your computer will make sure you have access to VPN and. And, you know, are very familiar. We'll, we'll build guides if we have to to help you when we're not there, so you can follow a procedure and. We'll make sure that you have access when you need it.
And I'm just weary of stuff on computers. You know, login emails and I'll call friends, you know, before I even open it, I'll call her and see if she knows anything about it, cause I'm even afraid to look at it.
Right, right.
Equity will be a big key, because it has to be fair, of course, of board. I still remember a principal calling me and on the last day of school, I said to my granddaughter, I did this and what is, what should we do? And I was teaching another school and I said. Well, it's gonna be, it's last day of school, it's a suspension last day. The next school year, which means she's gonna miss volleyball practice. I didn't even watch that being, so she broke the rule.
Right.
And I ended up, success. She just told the principal to suspend her granddaughter. She broke the rule. And I, yeah, I could have.
Yes.
That don't have anymore.
I agree with that statement, cause we have, you know, seen those complaints where. One person is given the same set of roles, but they're held accountable, but this person wasn't, because. Was part of, uh, another club in the school that, yeah, and it's interesting, but we definitely wanna. Any more questions, so that's it.
We're good for this evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Tafoya. Appreciate you being here and. Educating us on this, so we can be up to speed. Thank you, sir.
It was enough. Thank you all for having me.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
You're doing very well, boy.
Mr. Wyver.
All right, we're moving on to item B. Um, as you guys look around the room, you can see that we have the Board's Legal Council with us tonight. And so we are very thankful that Miss De Santiago is here tonight. And item B is our OMA resolution. And so without further ado, Miss De Santiago, the floor is yours.
He's superintendent, uh, Madam President, members of the board. So good to see you as always. Um, I'm gonna give you just an introduction to the OMA resolution. You have a copy of your current OMA resolution in your notebooks right now. See that it says twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, the reason it's on your agenda for discussion here tonight is because every year the board has to pass. A new OMA resolution. It's required by the Open Meetings Act. Um, what this OMA resolution does is it sets out the standard for the meetings for the district. Uh, for the entire year, so from July to July essentially. And, um, you will see that this one has some particular, uh. Information that is different from other OMA resolutions across the state. And in particular, it requires that whenever there will be a meeting of the board, that the, um. The notice of that be provided to the Pueblo of Laguna, the Pueblo of Akma and the Navajo Nation. Um, it does say by facsimile, so I, I don't know if we really sent a fax over to the Pueblos or not. It might be time to update that with email. Um, and also, uh, has a required, uh, notifications to any media. Broadcast media, radio that requests that information. Those are, uh, required here as well. So essentially this is broken down into three main categories. Paragraph one talks about your standard meetings that you will have. Uh, here it says that you're gonna have your standard meetings, uh, on Thursdays. And actually, that's the, that's the follow-up meeting, forgive me. It says that you're gonna have your standard meetings at central office, um. And I, I thought I just read Thursday, but it's probably because I didn't have my glasses on and now I can see. It's the next Thursday. So I, I don't know that you guys are meeting on Thursdays or not, uh, so we would probably wanna update that. It also does say that it says, it says first and, and third Tuesday, and then will be held on the next Thursday. That's what it is. So if you, if you get, hold it on Tuesday, you'll hold it on Thursday of that week. It does require two meetings a month. Um, if there is an exception for the summer, some school districts will have in that paragraph one. Except for the month of July, when we only have one, because, you know, people are gone or the month of June, when we only have one. And so if, if that's something that you want to add into your OMA resolution, now is the time. Um, in paragraph one, it also lists the specific holidays for the next calendar year, according to the school calendar that has been approved. It's not required that those be included. It's all, it's nice though to know whether or not they're gonna impact, um, your scheduled meetings. The second paragraph, um, is about the notice. The third paragraph is about special meetings, those in which. Uh, you're not meeting on that, uh, first and third Tuesday, but you're meeting for some other reason. And then paragraph four is about emergency meetings, which are very, very rare. Um, and, uh, six is about notices that have to have specific language. This is all standard language, paragraph six. Uh, five and six are all standard language. So really the, the question for the board is. Do you want to continue with the first and third Tuesday of every month, followed by a Thursday if it's not available? And, uh, can we update it to remove the facsimile for the fax, uh, references? One last thing that does need to be added into this OMA resolution that wasn't applicable last year, was the information about streaming. That has now become the law, that now needs to be added here. Was the information about streaming that has now become the law, that now needs to be added here. Just in the same way that you have to add it to your agenda, uh, and the the accessibility to streaming is. To be added to your open meetings um resolution, and and certainly put it back on the agenda for next week and include any revisions at the board. Um, in in addition to revising it to reflect the the correct school year. Um, and the correct uh holidays, we would add reference to. Uh, the streaming and of course, whether or not the Pueblo has received faxes or not, I I don't know, maybe we could take out that reference.
Emily Guy, do you know if it would be better for us to take faxing out and have emailing? Because I know the district emails the Pueblos and. The Navajo Nation, the the notice and the PSA, rather than faxing, I believe.
Do we have a fax machine?
Want to be able in the HR maybe?
And our our copy.
What do they get, but what do they get?
Oh, you don't know how many emails, mine.
What would what would be the best information to get to them?
I talked with.
Like speed, like.
Faxes, because she she's got the actual paper copy, it would take her a whole day to go through the governor's emails. Cause he gets thousands of them, and so um, the only one short shorty was that she could. The fax machine beeps when it gets a fax, she gets it, she takes it to wherever it needs to go to.
Okay.
That's it, that's open to the way to do it, but.
Listen, so sometimes uh uh hospitals actually still use fax machines because of the encryption that's available there. And and if you haven't seen a fax machine, that doesn't mean that we're not receiving faxes, most copy machines now also serve as fax machines, so. Something comes through and boom, it pops out on your printer, and you have no idea, you just received a fax. So, um, with with that being said, uh, member Hunt Daily, I then I withdraw my recommendation to remove the language about facsimile. Um, communication.
The other way is is texting is fast too, you know, that's a fast information to text.
Yeah, but it's a lot of information, if you're talking about texting an agenda and texting the PSA and everything. It's not just, you know, a couple of sentences, yeah. But so I think on that one, maybe it says email and.
It does say email.
Facts, right, so. I think my my question regarding this is um. Whether or not a work session has to be. Livestreamed now, because I believe in what we had here, it does not specify. That work sessions have to be streamed, but I know, you know, the language that was updated, as you were saying. Within this last year, is stating that now we have to specify that work sessions. Are also streamed, so wherever that is in here, I think if you can check that wording, that language.
Madam President, this um uh, this resolution actually doesn't specifically refer to work sessions, they are typically treated as. Special meetings unless they fall under the regular meeting. Um, under the regular meeting of the of the first and third Tuesday of the month. So work sessions now fall under special meetings, uh, actually not now, but have always fallen under. Uh, for purposes of the OMA, so we could add, we could add language in paragraph three about a work session, but. Yes, generally, now all meetings have to be streamed, yes, sir.
paragraph two?
Yes, sir.
Discussing public business.
Where, where?
Three, four, fourth line. On the second word as.
Oh, I'll pick the top, I'm looking at the rock.
I know, I was looking at actual number two.
Second word adds, open meeting.
One, two, three, four, formulating public policy.
Yeah.
The next phrase is discussing public business.
Yes.
That's what a work session is for.
That is true, but discussing public this uh, a work session is. A work session, a regular meeting, and a special meeting are all for the purpose of discussing public business.
I I read it that.
We already included it?
It's already been included.
Understood, fair.
We can't uh exclude it from.
No, we cannot, yeah, you're correct, Dr. Guy.
So again, in in number three, it would be specifying.
We could add something about including work sessions or any meetings with any other kind of thing. What you you can call it whatever you want, you could call it, you know, party on the green if you want, I mean. It's still, if it's a, it's a gathering of the board for the discussion of public business, it's it's pursuant to the Open Meetings Act.
So I think, I think if we could just add. A little something specifying work session in that with, in conjunction with the special meetings. I think that was all I had, I don't know, board members, do you have anything else for Miss De Santiago on the Open Meetings Act? Think we're ready to move on?
Okay.
They would, they would fall under.
So next will be the Superintendent Evaluation Instrument.
So, uh, Madam President, members of the board, in your notebook, you have the full evaluation instrument. As it currently exists, now, uh, mine, uh, mine, I had to be ordered. Um, they're not, the pages are not numbered, but if you look at it on uh. On the left-hand column, it should start with one point one, and then the next page should be one point two, and then the next page should be one point. You know, I mean, I mean, two point one and then three point one and so forth. Um, this is your full evaluation, you want me to say that again, Dr. Guy? You should start, your first page should be one point one at the top, your second page should be two point one. Your third page should be three point one, all the way through seven. You guys have been able to do that, and then after seven point one are the goals. And then after that, the summary sheet, I I think the only ones that were.
Was one, two, and three.
One, two, and. And again, they're not numbered, so unless you spent as much time as me have with it, there's no way you would have known. Um, what I did for purposes of this discussion. Was that I took this evaluation form, and I condensed it in some format. So that we could discuss the summative and formative evaluation, so I will hand out uh. For you guys to review, this shorter version, what I did here essentially was take this long form. Read through the evaluation instrument itself. Make some kind of a educated guess about which were the most critical items. From each particular session, section to reduce down to. A shorter version of the evaluation. But for example, uh, one point one is about board relations, and. In my work with boards, I know that one of the most critical things between a superintendent and their board is to ensure that there is effective. Communication, a lot of things are covered with the phrase effective communication. And so, um, that's the one thing that I left, and I sort of left that one item. And in in some instances, condensed a couple of items. Um, in an effort to make this version shorter, it could still be condensed possibly a little bit more. Um, there could be fewer goals at the end, we could switch the goal category to something that aligns with. Plan more specifically. Um, but this is uh the the first attempt, if you would, at creating a condensed version of your very long. Um, evaluation, now I know that we've talked about doing a a shorter version. And a longer version, and then also taking the long version and condensing it as well, because it feels so long when we took the very, very long one. But I left that one alone for now, uh, based on uh the work that I did here, just to hear some feedback, I know it's long, and it'll take you guys a minute to go through, compare. Um, but that's what a work session is for. Well, sometimes, uh, Madam, uh, Member Hunt Bailey, what I did is I took out entirely. Some of the issues that were like data collecting or establishing systems. Because those require a lot more detail, I left the broader picture issues, in the version that you have. I left it numbered in the same way as it is in the other evaluation. We'll go back and renumber it differently, so that it makes sense, they like, they progress chronologically, um, but. But I didn't, to your point, uh, Member Hunt Daily, I didn't. Um, condense everything from the large one into this one, because. The goal was to streamline the shorter process, and to give. Clarity on the bigger picture issues for the purpose of giving direction to the superintendent. And I'm happy to review with you guys, section by section, if you think, but um, I know that you guys have a lot of experience with this document. Reference it back and forth.
Okay, I see what you did, like with the third section, you kept three one, three three, and three eight. Because those were the the highlighted ones, so to speak.
Those were the ones that that I determined that were the most critical. And required. The least amount of interpretation and data to support, it was more subjective, so that the board would be able to easier answer those things. When you're doing the short cycle assessment.
You can just turn down to three in each category.
I I worked hard to get it down to at least three in each category, some only have two, but some have three. And it it still feels too long, I do still think that there are some other ways to even further. I think you go section by section on this one.
Mister Santiago, some of the. Major projects, the data, the reports, that can kind of be documented in those reports or the strategic plan.
That's why they were removed, superintendent, is because I think that some of those line items are still going to support. The other portions of that, in order for uh for, you know, the reports to be presented in front of the board, or. Other information to be provided to the board, you still need to be doing, the superintendent still needs to be doing all of that in order to. For example, effectively communicate what's going on in the district, right? So that's why um some of those items were removed, not that you wouldn't need to do those things, because those items would still remain in. In the summative, I can, I get summative and formative backwards all the time, which is why I've been saying short and long here, so forgive me. But you would still need to do it for the long evaluation, and you would still really need to be doing it on a consistent basis in order to. To provide the information needed, even for the short um evaluation, um.
And I think that could be very good, because I know when we went through the process, several board members asked it, asked. For that evidence, where's the evidence, where's the, you know, and so that would be good supporting.
Yeah, and and I I don't wanna give the misimpression that that because we're doing a short cycle and a long cycle, that. That those things are no, are no longer necessary, they would remain there, and I think they're critical for you to. To be able to provide even the information that's left here.
I agree.
What the, it is possible, uh, Member Hunt Daily, but the goal is to shorten it. So that it doesn't take us long to complete when we're doing the short cycle, it would still remain in the long cycle assessment.
Because I was, I'm a very visual person.
Okay.
Unless, not. And so I have to see it all, and then I I start to slowly. Try to understand what I'm seeing.
Sure.
And write us some. Thoughts about its value. And so I'm I'm not so much, I'm interested in making it efficient and effective.
Correct.
Efficient means that it doesn't take the two weeks to complete the part.
And but it it also needs to be effective.
You can't compromise the effectiveness.
Correct.
By shortening.
For the sake of shortening it along.
Yeah, and to get it done fast.
Correct, I agree.
So, I have to think through, what is it they were trying to do, what is it? I guess what? The superintendent is trying to do. It pays off who he has been during this year, in the future year. And saying that these are the things that I really wanna emphasize, and I gotta live with this. Is this really going to reveal the the strengths of my leadership? And I've got five board members who who need to make a judgment upon that. So. He has to look at it in that context, and one of the critical issues about evaluations of people. Is subjectivity. Is that. It may have the appearance of being objective, but it's, but but it's more subjective. And the weakness of that is that it may not, you can. Be be kind of, um, result that you would deserve. You may want to have something a bit more concrete.
More objective.
Specific. That says, this is what I'm, this is what I'm all about, it's the time to do this, this. The board and the superintendent is trying to get certain things done, and I'm gonna, we're gonna hold ourselves accountable to get that done.
I do think, uh, uh, Dr. Arshin Bob, that. That using the part two, the the section two, where we have like goals. Uh, is a good place to get that done. By using that section to reference specific goals that are tied to the strategic plan. And updating that section every time, there is no way to remove subjectivity. From a phrase like communicate effectively, because. because communicating effectively is always evaluated subjectively based on, but the speaker's perception and the listener's perception. So I don't know that we could remove all subjectivity, but I do think that we could use the part two, the goal section, to tie it, to maybe tie that section to something more objective and tied to the strategic plan and the goals that the board sets. That in that section can be tied to short term and long term cycle assessments of the students and student achievement, for example. And then that would be very objective.
Yes. The other thing I would consider is longer version is especially useful to early new people in the first
Yep.
with no educational experience or background. Not that you can see, they have to explain what we're looking for or what they should be looking for when they're doing their evaluation. Instead of actually limit it and then have them asking the question in the board reviews or make a decision. What do you mean?
Yep.
But it, the longer version does provide that.
Yeah, Member, Member Hunt Bailey, that's a very good point. It is true that the long version does provide more information. I, I don't think that there's anything that prohibits us from providing the long version to new, new incoming board members as part of their orientation. So when a new board member arrives on the board and they're given an orientation packet, and if you're not doing that, then maybe that's something that, that you should start doing. But that, that, that packet, that orientation packet would have the long version and the short version so that they can have all the information available to them. I, I do also believe that there's nothing like actually doing the long version and understanding it and trying to apply it to the current circumstances that, that's gonna teach you better than, than anything else, right? There's no orientation that's gonna teach you how to do that long version other than just actually getting it done and applying it. So, and even the first time around for new board members, doing it the first time probably still feels like you're a little lost until you've done it a couple of times. That's the other reason, though, why I didn't want to change it very dramatically from the long version and the short version. I think that there still has to be some connectivity between the two assessments. It can't be assessing completely different things and using completely different languages. Otherwise, it's, it's essentially doubling the work for the board because then you're doing two different evaluations. It should still have the same ideas flowing through them. They should be congruent one with the other.
I think that makes sense because I think that new board members coming in with what we just adopted, their first time will be having a shorter version in February, March. But then, you know, that will lead, lean into the, the final, you know, big one. But it's, I think, no matter what, you know, hopefully, board members are gonna go to that November, December training in Albuquerque and get some insight there. But I like your idea of doing a formal packet to help
Orientation.
You know, having a new, you know, because that.
Because the training in Albuquerque, or wherever it happens, it's usually in Albuquerque in December. That's very generic.
Very.
But your evaluation here in Grant Sebelah is very specific. There is no other district that has what you guys have. So that information over there is good to give them a thirty thousand dollar, a thirty thousand foot view. But having a local orientation for your, for your newly elected board members or your newly constituted board members, even if it's still, you know, the same, all of you guys returning, is always a good reminder to, to be able to, to find everybody. All right, we're doing this short cycle here, this long cycle here, this short cycle here, this short cycle here.
Like Francie said, you know, if we had this, you know, we'd have been looking at this.
In December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, even though we weren't gonna do it, it was just something for us to review would be, like you said, an orientation package. This is how we'll be evaluating the superintendent in March.
And an orientation package can include, for example, your, your Alma Resolution that we just reviewed. That way they can go and put it on their personal calendars, make sure that it's there for the whole year. It can include some information about the budget preparation process because that's so very important. And a reference to, a link to the board policies. Provide them with some of the most critical board policies that impact the way the board does their work. Their ethical responsibilities for your district. How a meeting is scheduled for your district, that kind of thing. We're off topic, but, but I know you guys are still reviewing. That's why I thought it was okay.
Like you said, it's a work session. We're just asking crazy questions.
We can talk and share.
Right, hundred percent.
And Lane also, yeah, I think processing gave some feedback on this too. I was, I did not spend any time on this during the Fourth of July weekend.
Good.
We all needed a break, right?
A break and we all would show our pictures of what we did.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying to you is so coming to do, to do this is not easy task.
No, I agree.
And so, for example, what I'm trying to do, if I'm looking at these and I'm looking at one point, one point, one, two, one, three, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Which of these are more specific, which ones are less, are less specific? I like more specific because I, I then know what they're going to.
What you're gonna rely on.
And they're gonna look for.
Correct.
Whereas number one point one, effective communicate, that's really subjective.
That is. That's so correct.
He could write, he could do two volumes and we would still say that's not enough.
Right, that's.
So what I'm saying is that he would like to probably have some, some agreement amongst us. What can we keep communication?
Well, I think guidelines
Yeah, some kind of.
For us to come together, to be able to say, we would like not just the newsletter, but maybe, you know, X, Y, or Z, right? I mean, isn't that what you're getting at, Guy?
Text messages, you want emails, you know.
Oh, yeah. That there are some information that are just ordinary, running in the middle kind of stuff. There's some information that actually have more impact that may have more meaning for the goal that we're trying to achieve. That's what she's saying. Is if we have goals, specifically outcomes, if we're here to improve learning, teaching and learning, then we should look for those communications that are gonna show us that, that we're, that he's really developing. He's really, he's really showing us a communication that, that related to, to our goals. And not everything under the sun because it would really be taxing for him to, well, what am I gonna put in here? And so if we give him a focus, then, then, and you can suggest some areas that you, you want to focus your committee, list up topics on. Effective, effectively communicate with all members of the board on specific areas that pass, then list them.
I think that's a good idea.
See, then, then, and then you can say, let's, does that work? Let's think about it. And then you may say, well, I'd like to add about a couple more topics. So there'd be about four, four categories of communication that we all agree would be the most important things that are meaningful to everybody, to us, that's gonna impact student learning. And so you, since you created your three ring binder the last time, you kind of have it, you can remember back. Okay, if I did that, that would make my work a lot easier. Then I'd focus on all those things that we all understood he's gonna show us or that he has to show us throughout the year. He has to communicate to us about, about, about progress we're making in, in student learning. Progress we're making in professional development. Communication about, about legislative issues. Communication on parental involvement. And so I'm just suggesting, I'm based on some
Right.
And just kind of saying, how would that make it much more effective and efficient for him?
So wouldn't.
Important things.
Right, so wouldn't, and this is a great question for our council. Isn't communication in board relations, wouldn't those go hand in hand together?
They do, they do go hand in hand. But you do have to, the two, section two is all about communication now. General section two point, the, the section two is about communication generally, not just with the board, but with all stakeholders, students, staff, parents, community stakeholders, the community in general. And so, so yes, which is, which is precisely why I didn't remove effective communication under board relations because there is a different type of communication that needs to occur with the board. You are entitled to, you are entitled to have different communication with your one employee and you're entitled to different levels of communication. So I do think that, to Dr. Guy's point, that effective, effectively communicate with all members of the board and then removing that next line that says, so that the board may perform responsibilities and changing that to something, maybe more specific makes sense. So maybe it will say communicate, effectively communicate with all board, with all members of the board and then say regarding student achievement, implementation of strategic plan and something. I'm, I'm thinking out of that up here.
You can think of something, you could probably stack a bullet, some of those things. And then, but not create ten items.
That's what I was just, he saw my eyes go like this and he knew.
But it would be, you would decide, okay, it's just gonna be these three things.
Yeah.
Something like that. On student outcomes, student learning, professional development.
Well, and I wonder, is that something we could incorporate into the tool where there's a dropdown with those three items?
See, then you can drop down that.
Sure.
And then if you guys go in to fill it, you could say, okay, here's student achievement.
A hard thing and, and Guy, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you, but I think if we're talking about student data and stuff like that, we can't expect that information on a weekly or even monthly basis because the testing and the data, we, we don't have that live time, you know what I mean?
Say that to us. You can say, I'm not gonna give you all of this every week, every, every two weeks. Or I can say, or he can say, I'm going to give you this information.
Quarterly data.
Quarterly basis, for the board. You're actually, it's a, it's a
That's a good idea.
If you're educating the board, lots of.
So more, more outlining timeline of when the data is available.
Or, or having us better understand the things.
The short, the short cycle and long cycle assessments.
And so you can, you can gear it to things that exist that the principals are already gonna give to you anyway.
Right.
Or the central office already give you the information anyway. So whatever information.
Well, we can always, we can always reference too. If we're, if we're doing the evaluation, the first week of March, we could say, in December, you were presented the fall data for students mid-year. You know, and this, that would be the data that you would have to evaluate at this time.
Another way of saying it too is that it is our expectation. We expect you to keep us informed as to your instructional leadership in these areas. And so we, we want to know that you are doing due diligence on this or that your staff is very good with it, or that the principals are taking care of business so that they're following this, actually, they're following the information to you. So then you decide which of, what information is going to be, gonna help the board know that we are en route to achieving our end of year goals. What are our goals? Our end of year goal is that students will all succeed, but whatever one's saying. And that along the way, our, we will can be able to communicate with the board on specific areas that we will list. And I will even be able to time on it so that if, and some may come every mid-year, may come every year, may come quarterly, they may come monthly. But we would be able to, to do that. We can actually begin to identify some of these things. So I just, we should not, we should give you some flexibility so that you may be able to communicate other things that the board should know.
Throughout the year.
Throughout the year, whether it's outside of student performance, professional development, parental involvement, travel relations. These are those things that will help both the board and its governance in helping you in your leadership at the same time.
I, I think to that point, Dr. Guy, though, is it important to, I, I, I think it's important to remember that this short, this short assessment, this short evaluation isn't limiting him in any way in terms of the type of communication he could have with the board at any time. It's simply saying, as a short assessment on the evaluation and not taking away from the full evaluation that is done once a year, that these, we want to make sure that you're effectively communicating and these are the three areas or four areas, depending on what the superintendent identifies, that we're gonna look most closely at in the short cycle. That doesn't mean that he's only limited to communicating with you guys on those, on those topics.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having to understand short cycle things.
Yeah, so formative is short cycle. So far, right?
I didn't remember we were talking about that much. I might have been sleeping in the last meeting at that time or sick or something. But I, what did we say about short cycle?
So what, what we're, what, the, the idea being, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're gonna do two formatives, one in the fall and one in the spring.
March.
And then the summative will take place
Okay.
June, June.
Yeah.
So, so October, October and March will be the formatives.
Which I call short.
Short cycles and then the big one would be in, right?
See, I would, I would be registered, it's all. Assessment.
But we're still doing a fall.
Spring.
Right.
And spring.
But you're saying short cycle one, short cycle two, or formative one, formative two.
Right.
And, but I, I just needed to keep that in mind. To me, both formatives need to be aligned with the summative. That is that the two, that the documentation that occurs in the formative, whatever we said about in the formative, who's gonna help us do the final?
Correct, Dr. Guy, that.
The two formatives don't connect, then this isn't gonna work.
Correct, that's, that's precisely why, Dr. Guy, I did not create a whole new document. And just a little bit ago, I, I realized you were reading during that time. But that's precisely why I didn't change a lot of the language. And to the extent that we change the language right now in one point one, for example, to say, you know, effectively communicate with all members of the board regarding student learning, strategic planning, implementation, and whatever else, that that language also changed in the summative evaluation so that it does remain consistent. I, I don't, I think that the only way that they're gonna work together is if they are measuring the same thing, even though the form, the summative, the long one, has more categories that are being assessed versus the short one. But they're not different categories. They're the same category.
See, you're creating something that I'm trying to, I don't know, maybe a statement that seem to exclude my role in that statement.
Awesome.
Well, the decisions about certain things.
This is true. And, and I will, and, and I will readily admit that when we had this first discussion about creating a When we had this first, um, discussion about creating a, a shorter version of the evaluation. And the longer version of the evaluation, I believe it was member Hunt Daly who said, we're the ones who've always done this, so. Can we just do this work ourselves? And you certainly can. I'm provided this short version as a way to start the conversation, because I know how long yours, your evaluation is.
How long was it?
It was long. We went through it for a while.
It, it's been always.
We're, we're talking about communication though, right, how he's communicating.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's just the first, that's just the first page, but.
It's too easy to feel that if I get it done in the next hour. Or I mean, it, it, you can put up, just restate it, yes, that.
Or that day, that night.
This board is new, it's the first time that we're really actually, uh, the second time we're actually looking through this. And, 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 and then it is also case. I'm still trying to process this, these two, these two, the fall and then the spring and then the final. Okay, so I'm trying to, this is supposed to represent. This is the example of the, of the falls, of a fall document, will the spring document? Be the same.
So the fall document and the spring document are the same, and then the summative is the one that you've always done.
Big one and then we do it in June.
I don't wanna do that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm, I should, I should not be as emphatic as that. I'm just remembering back and how long it, it took us to do those things. And so I'm saying, I don't wanna do, I don't wanna go through that pleasure of doing it like that again. So, so I'm trying to figure out a way in which we, we.
I have an idea.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Santiago, what if? There's, you know, this condensed version, I, reading through it, I think that we probably could have two points. For each rather than three, um, that being said. To make both formatives be leading up to the summative. So both short cycles leading up to the long. What if we had one short cycle that was, say, you know, the top. The top half, and then the second formative would be the second half.
That's a good idea.
Where then the final would be the synthesis of both. So that, so guy, what, what I'm thinking is that, you know. But still simplify, because I think what you're indicating and what we all feel is that we would like to. Um, shorten a little bit, condense a little bit, the, the full, big, huge evaluation because of how lengthy it is. We don't wanna take too much away, but if we had, say, in the fall, the, you know, the big. What I'm in a, what I'm gonna call the big, you know, bullet points of.
One through seven.
You know, hey, Mr. Widener, we need for you to have, you know, these expectations met. And then when we go to that spring evaluation, okay, we have talked about these. You know, main things that you have met, but now here are some more of the details. And then when we're getting to June, it would be combining those into. You know.
Yeah.
Bigger.
I think that is, that is an idea.
I mean, it's an idea, that was all.
Concern, my concern with that is that there then would be a long period of time between. Between either, either half, right?
And that's, that's the issue is.
We're not visiting two point two until the end of the.
It's like we do with, with principals evaluate the teachers. They don't do that. They have to take those four competence, those four domains. And they gotta examine every one of those for the state requires them to be measured by, evaluated by those, by the competences. So they, they can't say, well, I'm just gonna do the first two in the fall and then for the second two in the spring and then I'll come up with that.
Excellent point.
It won't work.
I just looked at it that way.
Do is to be, actually, what she's saying is be smart about what it is that we expect of you to show us. That, uh, is much more succinct and much more specific, but still keep the, the main categories, there are seven categories. Right now, but, am I right?
Seven categories plus the goal section that currently has four goals.
Yeah, and that's a whole, that's a, that's, that's the part that's really important. And she was trying to figure out a way how we connect those two with, with, where the goals somehow drive. Your one principal set.
Correct.
The goals that we want to achieve in this district or the expectations that we have. Have to be stated in that section, we've not really spent the time to really fully develop that in the past. And we, we didn't get involved with that section and we really didn't do the, do a lot of work on that section. On to itself with previous super teams. But it's an important part, because it's the part that, that tells you, these are the goals. And those seven, you need to perform your duties to achieve those goals. Now, there's two ways to look at those goals. And I think we've looked at it in, in, one way we've looked at it is where the superintendent says, these are the goals that I want to pursue. I don't think that works, I think it has to be a mutual vision. And when we, when we say, these are the goals that we want to have accomplished this year. It may be measurable, maybe say, we need to have the kids perform questions. We need to have a greater increase of kids doing well in reading or in math. Something of that sort. And, and, and that, and that we would want to, to have you a final seven. In time to get those, get there with them. And so it actually will help you to report to us progress made. So when you give those, those data presentations, they actually are associated with. Something where we've decided, we've said, we're going to focus on reading and the kids need to make, uh, this amount of progress. And we both will be in sync with respect to whether or not we got there, but say it is the first quarter. And we can say, okay, the, the data shows this or that, and we then say, well, um, are we really? And you'd be able to say, I think we're, we're dropping back in a certain category. Or you can say, I think we're really stage strong next level time. And then say, let's go to the next, let's go to the mid-year and what does the mid-year say, and we already know what we have said, what is our goals. What have we said that we're gonna increase our performance by ten percent?
It is only fair to him that. That he focuses on the goals, cuz that's how I would evaluate is these are our goals, where are we with our goals?
Yeah, and how do you do the seven in order to get there? And the parents want to know that too, they wanna know, are the kids learning? Are you guys together in doing this? And, and that's, that's, I think just talking about it like that. It kinda helps me understand better why this should be valuable and meaningful for you. Uh, I'm just, I've been talking too long though.
Well, uh, well, they would help Lane too, cuz he would know these are what the goal, the strategic plan is, the goals are. Our goals, you know, the board goals, and then he'll tell us what his goals are, and then we just use the goals as part of the, to finish the tool.
Why don't we start with the discussion there, sort of starting at one point one, why don't we turn to the back of this evaluation tool? And look at the four goals that are listed there, you have it in your long version. But I reduced it down in the short versions as well. Um, we could update the goal section today as part of our discussion. And, and then go back and reevaluate the top half of the, of the evaluation based on what. What we discussed in the goal section.
And maybe, maybe the goals become the formative.
Right.
Because, and, and this aligns with our strategic plan, which.
Goal.
We could use only the goals that are formative, is that what you're saying?
So what were you gonna say, Guy?
No. Is that enough?
It's. I, I don't.
When you, when we do a new strategic plan, then that's gonna revise.
The goals, correct, right.
Well, then you, the, the strategic plan is gonna revise your new one for the following year.
Correct.
So that in this section, we would not say, oh, one cost us students.
Well, and I hope, I hope when we do a new strategic plan. I hope we keep. We have some good stuff here, and, and so I don't know that we wanna necessarily.
Change it.
Change it a lot, I, I think. I think you guys, I, and I, I know you guys created it five years ago, but it's a good strategic plan, so.
Well, and the goals are all reliant on how you implement and the district implements.
Well, and.
And the effectiveness of the strategic plan.
And Tbilisi County and the goodness of our community and.
But I, I mean, I think looking. Looking at the goals, you know, they, they all fall into. Ob- obviously by design, you know, each of the sections, the, the multiple sections. But what I was gonna suggest too, and I like going and starting with the goals. But I think if we can take out a little bit of the redundancy. Like, you know, I'm gonna just throw us back to that first section, effective, you know, communication. And then updates the board as needed, you know, those are, those could be. Yeah, exactly, Mr. Ortiz, those really could be one instead of two different points. You know, and then that would.
Are you reading the goals?
No, I'm on, I'm back on our first.
And that is, and that was, that was what I was trying to do.
Right.
I simply didn't wanna take out too.
Too much.
Of what you guys had worked so hard, because I might interpret it differently than each of you might. It might mean something different to you.
I just, I, I love the idea of a streamlining.
Do, I, I do think that the idea of pulling your strategic plan out, looking at your strategic plan goals. Including them in the goal section, although, I mean, to be frank, like, your goal number one is student learning. Which, by the way, should be in your strategic, strategic plan, because that's the reason why a school exists, is to ensure that student learning is occurring. So I, I think that it's generic enough, but if we can, if we can incorporate the same language of the strategic plan in the goal section here. That there's consistency in terminology and language, it might help. When you're doing your presentation superintendent on the strategic plan, the board then knows, oh. He ta- when they go back and do their evaluation, oh, he talked about X, Y, Z. And that same X, Y, Z language is in the evaluation instrument itself.
Do you still have the blown up version of our four goals on the strategic plan? Or do you have the one page that we could show?
I'm not sure that I.
I do.
You can say, Dr. Guy, that you don't agree with me, that's okay.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I, I still think we need to just.
Sure.
We, um. Policy and legislative issues.
And that one is, is particularly important for you, so we could either include it in one point one or leave it in. As its own bullet in section one. I believed that policy and legislative issues would be something that would occur at the end of the legislative session. And when NMSBA issued their policy advisories, but, yeah.
Or it used to be. Educated about that process in the fall, so that they itself, for itself, and, and. Generate a, a legislative document. And that's the perspective. Needs. Because right now what happens is that we, we're able to be simple meeting, up, 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 both those things, and then just bring it back. Well, what about the need to, 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 to. So what we need to do is to, to communicate to the powers. And so that's one of their concerns that, uh.
So.
I don't know how you felt before, how you felt about that, but, uh, it, it was too easy. And then we just start up what they say and then.
Without thinking about it, yeah.
So, I thought, I thought the board's responsibility to educate us. About the, about the legislative issues, there would be federal legislative.
It's true.
Things that happen in Washington.
Right, yeah.
That he, he may need to. Go through that, uh, we're on top of that too.
Dr. Guy, would it, would it, when we're talking about the short version, cuz the long version already has. Advice and support on legislative priority and strategies for action, it already has up there. But would it be then helpful to say in the short version, uh, effectively communicate with all board members. Regarding student learning, strategic plan implementation and legislative priority. And stra- and strategies for action, that we would combine it with the one point one?
Maybe some blind actually. I, I, I was sort of thinking something else.
I'm so sorry.
I'm not listening to you. You know.
I'm not offended.
I'm humbling, that's forgiveness.
No, it's okay.
Sort of.
So, I mean, there's four gold here, I mean, to see, are they?
Yeah, I could, I could see merging as well. Policy and legislation.
Because these drive, Roxy, my understanding is that, and, and. Our veteran board members can perhaps educate me a little bit better. But my understanding is that Dr. Williams helped create the one pager here. In order to drive forward, this wasn't Dr. Williams, who was this that did the one pager?
Uh, I don't know.
I will say.
Cuz I thought this was part of the, when Dr. Williams was doing the strategic plan with the district. Mr. Widener, who was the driving force behind getting the one pager?
Um, that actually came from the board. I wanna say the fall. When you guys were elected before you were, or when you were running, um. We had a work session and the board wanted to kind of come up with a succinct way to present the strategic plan.
Well.
They're already, they're already in your goal section of your.
Right.
They're already there, that's exactly what's there right now.
Right, and that was why I, I asked Mr. Widener to print it, because that was what my understanding was. This is what.
Already there.
Was driving the goals.
We're gonna throw in a, uh.
A Hail Mary, yes, please, oh darn.
Through it, through a second football on. The, the superintendent's contract also has to be.
Okay.
The superintendent's contract, but, but, uh, this is designed.
He revised it.
Which, I've. I know we've done that, but we need to see whether or not there is language in there that is helpful. And, I don't know, because actually your contract and evaluations.
Correct. Agreed, you wanna, you want me to find a copy for you and get it for you right now? Okay, we can do that.
I can get a copy.
Yeah.
I will take it.
Well, and that'll help us in executive. Well, that's gonna help us in executive as well, yeah. So should we, in, in regards, Roxy, to his contract? That is not open.
The contract is, is open, uh.
It's approved, it was approved in public.
Okay. I was just making sure.
Not gonna go in the minutes, but we can review it and discuss it, it's. And I, I have a copy here.
He's, Lane's printing a copy too. The other document I'm not worried about.
Okay. Completely black, I need to get. So Nathan restarted, nothing came out, so hopefully it's working, oh, it worked, cuz he printed it wrong.
Yep.
Okay. I don't know what it was, it was black, the screen light was like, usually can touch it and wake it up.
Your fireflies are gone.
I redid it online, okay, thank you.
I was gonna just tell you it was. I was gonna just tell you it was seven thirty six.
Only does the.
Two hours. Thank you for that clarification, Roxy, cause I thought if we were discussing that, it needed to be executive.
Um, if we're discussing it's.
Creation, implementation.
Yeah, if we're gonna, if we're discussing how the superintendent is performing under the contract, that's.
I think condensing it is great.
Yeah, me too. The other ways long.
And I think, Roxy, you know, we've talked about how. We can maybe streamline it a little bit, even the bigger version. Because I think, you know, as I was even looking through some of these sections. You know, some of, some of them are, you know, repetitive.
Where it gets repetitive for me. Is when we get to the goal section and you're, and you think about, oh, I already talked about that up above. Which is why I took out so much of the whole bullets, because I thought that that's where it got particularly repetitive. So the goal section seemed to be talking about things that we had already talked about. Which is why I left it down to one line, now it's possible that we would wanna do the opposite, leave the goal section. More lengthy and take the top part and reduce it down to one line, that's also possible.
There's the current one that started.
Perfect. And maybe, maybe Guy and. I'll restate it when he's in here, but maybe Guy is genius in thinking that. We, we streamline this. To reflect what is in here so that they're really, you know, cohesive.
I think that what Guy is saying is this summative one, let's not leave it as long as it is now.
Agreed.
Uh, and so essentially. What I have created is a short cycle to make it the long cycle and then create something else as your short cycle.
And maybe it's the goals that become the short cycle.
Just the four goal section is the short cycle.
But leave all of the points. So I was saying that maybe you were. You were genius, I use that word, sir. Well, I was saying that I think that. You might be genius in thinking that. If we're gonna use the contract, we can use the contract. As, you know, a way to make cohesive the. Evaluation instrument and the contract so that they're they're together and then Roxy talking out loud just now. Was saying maybe what we look at because we're talking about making the summative. Not quite so lengthy. And using, you know, more along the lines of this here. Roxy's condensed version is summative, but then using all of the goals that are in here. Like if we, we look at the. Pages here of the goals. Keeping all of the goals and having all of the goals actually be for formative. Well, but there's multiple points in the goals, is what I'm saying.
So, Doctor. Do you think that? That for purposes of this revised document, you would need. Spend some time with it. So that we're not getting to a place tonight where we're voting on a document, you would rather take it home and assess if we could come back. Then do it in a hurry.
Agreed.
What I was thinking of doing was, I was saying to myself, okay, I'm gonna do. Create some bullets. To create more specific marks of activity to be items like one point one.
Rather than, rather than subjectivity.
Yeah, and decrease the subjectivity, increase the specificity. Make it more specific, so we all agree, this is the information, he knows I'm gonna get this information. And then all we have to do is decide when are we gonna get that information? And then in the end, we have to then judge whether that information. That then is a group decision, not a individual decision. Believe, believe it's subjective, then it's, then it's five different voices and you already saw that. And you can't have that, what I'm saying is that we vote. And show him only.
I think that you have a couple people that disagree with that.
I understand what you're saying and and um, one easy way to do that. Um, that I have actually recommended and and you guys did not like. Was for you guys to still do the one through five rating and he then be provided. Not the five ratings, but just the the total number that's there. Yeah, um, and and that's what I thought that you guys wanted to do again, but when I brought it up, the, the. The board as a whole decided, no, I want all the.
Not helpful for him.
Agreed.
So, that is a pretend we didn't want it all over the place. And so he doesn't know what to do. And so he wants, he wants.
Well, and you want, you wanna grow. Yeah, you, you wanna grow and you wanna do better. Especially when you're a teacher, when, you know, hit. You, you want to earn the A, and so, how am I going to earn the A?
It's easier for a teacher, cause he, he, he wanna get one person. But we give it five. And in the past, we did, not only did, just did the one. We need to go back to that. The, the challenge for us is then we have to, we have to then agree. In numerical rating, of course, it's just an average. But he needs to know where, where the area of strength, areas of weakness is, that's something that it needs to be. Also the single, but that's, that's something to be discussed. What I want to, what I'm seeing, I'm looking at the contract and it's a catch up for us.
Uh, um, on paragraph four specifically, it has a long list of. We did revise it, but uh.
It was necessary, and so I think we can, we can see that some of that is gonna surface.
Sure, it should.
Yeah, provide support and be accountable effective instructions for leadership. When I come across the word accountability, it means that. How do we hold you responsible for the, for the results? Or for the board, how do we hold you board members responsible for, for your leadership or your failure to do an explaining? Accountability is, 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 is really critical. So the better we do a job on this, the more accountable we are to the public. Right now, we're, we're accountable to the community. They want us here to, to, to learn. They expect us to, to ensure that everybody's doing the job and even you as board. You know, and and so that's, that's my soapbox, and I'm looking at this contract. It's Maryland family reached view instead, sounds like. The demonstrate student performance wellness, climate and culture that surfaces in our goals. Administrators, the instructional students, it's also. Assist the Board of Education Development process and criteria for monitoring progress, that's really important, evaluating performance in relation to the voids. That actually gets right into what it is. And and it fits right in, it kind of spells it out much more clearly for you. You know, it's gonna be fuzzy in general, it basically says. Then, C E assist the board in development of equitable distribution of these school distributed resources. That's part of the state's initiative to try to ensure that the Yat-z Martin. Thing is, uh, is, is addressed, with the resources going to the kids with needs relative to your adverse populations.
And that is all, that is included already in the board.
You have district board of education policies, that's what I was thinking that the, we still have that, uh, that, that item. Some working relationships, that's that travel. Maintain improvement document professional competence, that, that has to do with evaluations.
Documentation.
Documentation, yeah.
And you guys, you guys formulated that. Do we look at a tool that is based on the contract?
What, what I can do is, is I, I, I did look at the contract and, and what I can do is give you guys, what I recommend. Is give you all a chance to go back and look at these documents, um, member Hunt daily pointed out an item in. In, in section on board relations that she thought was important that I had removed. Um, but it could be consolidated into, you know, the item above in one way or another. So what I, what I can do would be to create a chart for you. That would take the items in the contract. And, and say which section of the formative that I, the short formative that I created. Is responsive to that and which section of the summative is responsive to that. That way you guys can coordinate it back, we, we all will then be coordinated in terms of where it goes back and forth. And then to address Doctor Guy's concern, when we come back and meet again on this issue, we can have. Then some idea of what is the specific metric that we want to look at to remove subjectivity and include. To, I mean, to, to reduce, we're not gonna be able to remove it entirely, but to reduce the subjectivity of this document. And that would help you, um. That would help you align your contract with your, with your. Evaluation and include your strategic plan all at the same time, so the chart would include the contract, your strategic plan. As well as what's in your formative and what's in your summative, that way you're not sitting here flipping pages back and forth trying to align it all. And because Doctor Guy is such a visual person, it'll create it in a chart for him and, and then he, he will like it anymore. Will that be helpful?
Yes, but I would hope that we would also, that one of our tasks is, is to identify some bullets that would. That would, that we could recommend for each one of the items.
I agree.
I agree.
Consolidate those. You got something that you think.
Is super important.
Uh, then just put it down, you don't have to do them all, just do those that are, that we kind of, um, have a feel for. In other words, how more, what? Let's be more specific about what kind of information you think he needs to provide in that. What specific information do we think we want in that one? And then she can take it and we can then come back and say, okay, these are, these are, some of us have contributed. Some things on this.
And we can put it up on the screen and work through it. If, if that's okay, if that's okay with you guys.
No, I think that that's excellent and this was, I think this session was very necessary. To hear and get a, a true foothold going forward into making it be right.
Sounds like a positive direction. Do we, so, would we, Mister Santao, would we have a another work session or would we?
You can have another work session, you can include it in your regular board meeting, it's a long discussion though. Um, so it's really, it, it's really up to you guys, I will say. That your regular board meetings are top full of, of, uh, heavy topics and reports already. So a special meeting slash work session.
How, how, how much time would you like to be able to work on that?
I think you could probably have it done live conference this week. Um, but I think I can still have it done by the end of next week, the chart for you guys. To go back and forth over, I think you could have that done.
Maybe we could have a work session at the end of the month?
Sure, I can, uh, for sure, I think if I send you the chart, then all of you have the opportunity to do. Exactly what Miss, uh, Member Hunt daily did at the very beginning, which is identify that thing in each section that is most important. To you as board members. Yeah, I agree with you.
I believe so, so next will be. We kind of talked about.
That was good though.
Yeah, very good.
Freddie reviewed these at the last.
Right, and without having the instrument, we at least have the plan for the instrument now. So I don't think that there's anything really that we would be adding to that right now. Mi- Mister Widener, did you think anything on D that you needed to add in?
No, I think, I think those are pretty solid right now and if we can incorporate the instrument. And, and so maybe our, maybe our goal is to have all of this in place by August.
This will be, this should be pretty quick, yeah. I need to. So we, we just lost two of our board members, so we, does anybody else need a break for a minute? Before we go into our policy updates?
I could use a break. But we can keep the policies very short.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's quick.
And then we can go into.
It's quick and then we'll go into executive. That's what we're gonna talk about right now, well, as soon as.
To take a break?
So let's take a. If anybody needs a, a, a bathroom break, apparently now is the time. If anybody needs a a bathroom break, apparently now is the time. Board members, we're ready to move on um to item E. Talking about the policy updates. And as you all know, over the last year and a half, I've I've talked a lot about. Making sure that our policies are updated, that our website is updated. You know, that we were in compliance, that we're doing everything that we possibly can. And you know, our our superintendent evaluation policy was. You know, I think the biggest one impacting us, but especially impacting our superintendent. Um and so I started looking at what policies had been adopted. But not updated on the website and and everything like that and Mr. Widener and I spoke about. How can we get us current? And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Widener now because that's. That's what this whole next section in the board packets is, board members, you'll see. Multiple pages of. Policies and and everything like that, Mr. Widener.
So I'll I'll kind of piggyback off of that. Um about during the evaluation process, during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. When we did the formative evaluation, um. Board members, we talked about the need for mentorship and mentoring for me as the superintendent. And mentoring for kind of the direction we were going with the district. Um I I partnered, as you remember, with Mrs. Lightfoot. And she has done a lot of time with the district in the last year and a half. Um and kind of a a big outcome of of the work and the mentoring work. Was that there was really a need for ensuring that we had systems. And that we had policies and we had procedures and that they were all in place and being followed. Everyone was adhering to that. Um so most of this year, we have worked on systems. We have worked on making sure that we have the procedures that align with the policies. Um and recently, this spring, um. We've I've I've transitioned a coordinator into quality assurances. And she's been working very closely in making sure that those policies are aligned. That they are updated, that when we do a second read and and we make changes to our policies. That we're making sure that that's on the website and and that we are adhering to the laws. Um and so. I'm I'm very proud, we are we are getting those systems aligned, we have a a great. Online component where you can open the policy, you can see what our procedure is. Um some of that is password protected, it's, you know, it may be for an employee, it may be for human resources to use. Um but we are we are getting very close to having a good policy. Alignment and and structure um and systems. And so um that's that's kind of the work there. What you see there is the list of our policies. Um probably what's coming out of these conversations. Is that some of these we will have to revisit. And we will have to bring up, you know, every other board meeting, we'll have to say, you know, we need to look at policy number. S seventeen, just to make sure that we are adhering to what the law says and what. NMSBA is requiring and what the legislature is requiring and making sure that we're compliant with the laws.
Well, and the good news is is that's gonna fall in line with the the instrument that we were just talking about. You know, when Guy was talking about that, so.
Our 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 website is getting more and more user friendly and more and more.
Complete.
Valuable as a tool. Uh I think for our employees, having an employee handbook is huge. And kind of helping them with the rules of their job and and you know. Uh what is bereavement leave and you know, and what is, wh- why is this something offered in a policy? So I think I think we're, I I I'm very excited and I'm excited for you all to see. How close we are to having really good systems. And 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 so um Ms. Gallegos Ortiz is, she's overseeing our quality assurances. And she'll be working very closely with with Ms. Turley and I and. And the board president as we work on the agendas and and kind of talking about what policies we need to make sure. Are accurate and current.
And and like Ms. Emily says, Hunt, is they need to be for everybody.
Correct, correct, and consistent and fair.
Well, across the whole district, not just selectively. That was a really good point that Miss Daly brought up.
And we we use the uh NMSBA service. And so they often will give us, they will give us policies. But then sometimes we make amendments or we 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 change them a little bit for how they relate to us and. And we need to make sure that those changes are documented accurately.
Very good.
The other thing that I learned is, you know, we had that one meeting with the disciplinary one that we had. We probably need like a discipline area across the board too, cuz some. Teachers or principals don't know, have a guidance of what to do with the student. You know, put them in their clothes, you know, I mean, there's. There's sometimes they don't know what to do. They're just on their own.
And I'm I'm really proud of our. I'm proud of our administrators and our 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 coordinators and and. Our users of of procedures and policies, they've worked very hard. Um they've come together, they've vetted, they've they've gone through and they've talked about, you know, what does a. What does a field trip form look like, what does that need to be? Is that something that can be online and you know, and and how do we go about that? So I I'm very, our employees have worked very hard on this, so I'm excited to share that with you all.
Great. All right, I believe we can move to executive session. So board members, I'll read the statement. The board will meet in executive session pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight section dash ten dash fifteen dash one H four. Of the Open Meetings Act to discuss possible or pending litigation. The board will also have a discussion of limited personnel matters pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight section ten dash fifteen dash one. H two of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act specifically. For the superintendent to update the board regarding employee movements, including changes, non-renewals, transfers, promotions, demotions. New positions and individual qualifications. Number two, for the superintendent to update the board regarding all other employee movements and completed movements. And their effects on the organizational chart and strategic plan for school year twenty-five, twenty-six. And for the board, finally, number three, to discuss superintendent board relations and the superintendent's evaluation. No action will be taken and only the items listed will be discussed. Uh board members, is there a motion to move to executive session as presented? If there are um any amendments? Yes. All right, and a second please. I'm gonna give it to Ron. It has been moved by Dr. Archambeau and seconded by Mr. Ortiz to move to executive session as presented. Any further discussion, board members? Hearing none, we shall proceed to a roll call vote. Mrs. Turley, please.
Daily. Yeah, Mr. Hadameo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye, the motion carries, the board has moved into executive session at eight oh nine E M.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Okay.
They're off.
We have four hours. All right, you guys get the big bucks tonight. Five hours.
Do we think we're live?
They even said. Are we muted? No.
No, I unmuted the boardroom. Well, the bottom one says muted.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe? See, I don't know how to unmute.
Nathan, are we on? It says we can.
You're good.
There it is.
He said.
Okay, you don't have Fireflies or anything going, do you?
It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, the board met in executive session pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one H four of the Open Meetings Act to discuss possible or pending litigation. The board also just had a discussion of limited personnel matters pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one H two of Thin Mex Co. And Meetings Act specifically for the superintendent to update the board regarding employee movements, including changes, non renewals, transfers, promotions, demotions, new positions and individual qualifications. Number two, for the superintendent to update the board regarding all other employee movements and contemplated movements and their effects on the organizational chart and strategic plan for school year twenty five, twenty six. Three, for the board to discuss superintendent board relations and the superintendent evaluation. No action was taken and only the items listed were discussed. Is there a motion to reconvene open session as presented? And a second. It has been moved by Mr. Hadamio and seconded by Ms. Uh, Had Daly to reconvene open session as presented. Mrs. Turley, roll call please.
Ms. Daly. Mr. Hadamio.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye, the motion carries the board reconvene open session at ten P M. Um, as far as action items go on the agenda. A is consideration of approval of the letter to the superintendent. No action will be taken. B, consideration of approval of the superintendent evaluation instrument. Again, no action will be taken. Mr. Widener, announcements, sir.
We do have a couple of important announcements. A week from tonight, July fifteenth, we will have our regular school board meeting on Tuesday night. You have underneath your packets the agenda for the G C C S Charging the Storm Leadership Summit. That will be happening July twenty second through twenty four. In two weeks. And so, um, I did send it to board members yesterday. So if any of you want to join us for meals or breakfasts or any of that, um, you're welcome to be part of that. Mr. Turley will do a, a P S A so that we, if we have a quorum, you're there as participants in the summit. August fourth through sixth, our students come back. Well, our staff comes back to prepare for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Students come on August seventh. And so there are the announcements there presently.
Thank you. Future agenda items as listed. Safety, security, uh, Pirate Stadium, um, bleachers, uh, sped update, M M S B A Policy Service advisories. That goes in conjunction with our item that we had about policy updates with Ms. Gallego Ortiz. Um, federal programs update, systems update, student handbook, staff handbook, uh, financial report for the fiscal year. Uh, we do have a student looking to graduate early. That will probably not come until August. Grant application, um, title funding updates. Anything else, board members? Okay.
I have, I, you know, I sent you a meal list of the things that I wanted to.
Yes, sir.
But I will modify those. I'm going to state briefly what some of them are. And so then we probably have to discuss that with the meeting. One of them. And I, the first one had to do with evaluation. Second one had to do with board goals, outcomes, expectation, void. Three had to do with refining our student outcomes opposed to governance by revamping their periodic new presentations of data. I'll probably have to discuss that so that it. And, uh, cause I was saying that we needed to look at the board at the, at the. The other one was reviewing the district ed- education plans submitted with the annual budget for the purposes of advising you to meet the board's goals and expect its student outcomes. That's kind of heavy duty. So I probably need to still talk with. About that. And then review and approve the ninety day dash plans to ensure the board administration is fully aligned with targeted goals. Now again, I need to, to explain that isn't. Yeah, um, do you know what I'm referring to when I talk about the district's education?
Yes.
It's the district's education plan. Ms., Ms. Roxy.
Yes, sir.
The, the state requires as part of the budget visit, uh, submission, the district's education.
Yes, sir.
And, um, the board critique that in previous meetings.
Okay.
That is, if you recall in the, in the statute, it talks about, uh, the board's authority to renew or approve the budget. It also says that the budget needs to be in alignment with the district's E P S. Well, the district E P S plan is no longer existing in that, with that acronym. They call it the district education. Years gone by, they never said anything about us submitting an education plan. When we first, when me and I first got on the board, they didn't, they didn't ask us to do that. Now that they're insisting that you shall do that. So we'd always thought that the strategic plan was the E P S, was the, was the district's plan. They don't look at our district's strategic plan.
Yeah.
They don't care about our strategic plan. Which means that it's the potential of, of our district strategic plan not being in sync with what they expect and they have specific requirements. You shall talk about this, this isn't that. And they, and it's not in a format of a form, it's a fo- it's a form.
Online form.
Online form. And they're forced to turn it in without us ever having a shot at sitting down and, and talking about it. Which was then. But it was then kind of, um, disconnects our strategic plan from the time that they had. And so, so what do we do? And that's what I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to state that as an, an agenda item. Is, is how, how do we get them aligned?
I, I do think that there, there are ways where the strategic plan and the uploaded education plan, um, align. Simply because we're in the district of educating children. Perhaps I can, I can send language for an agenda discussion and as preparation for the agenda discussion, we would have, um, I don't know how you would download and print the education plan that is submitted together with the strategic plan and, and, um, I don't know if there is a P E D handbook. Sometimes they put out a handbook on the education plan. Maybe we can include that in your packet so they can re- review it in advance.
I think we need to just talk about it first.
Okay. Do you want me to look for a handbook?
Could find that.
Okay.
They, they also in that, they ask for, um, metrics or, uh, what I would say is numerical, um, outcomes. But we haven't seen that. And so, you know, when, when you guys submitted it, we had to create some projected outcomes. Our strategic plan has, has outcomes.
Yeah.
For improving, uh, reading, writing, reading, uh, math and evaluation. So we have those and they're not, they're not compatible with, I'm sure they're not compatible with whatever they have to put in, into the education.
My, my impression of the education plan is so that it will allow the public education department to more easily provide information on the VISTAS. They want it in a format that'll allow them to translate it easier to VISTAS.
That's true. And I see that. The other one has to do with dash plans. Ninety day dash plans. What I, what I was proposing is that all dash plans be presented early in the fall rather than spreading them out over the, over the numbers and make them, make them brief and just the facts. Say, this is a, this is what, uh, these are, you know what the format is. What it's, every school district, every school has to submit a ninety day dash plan. You have to split one for the fall, that's split one for the spring. And so we need to be part of that dialogue and the board is. The board is not involved in the dialogue of that. That means that the ninety day dash plan is a requirement of the state but not of the district. Therefore, the state says thou shalt complete a dash plan in the form that we desire. You will state what your needs are and you will then state what you're going to do and what you could, what to project your, your measurable outcomes want to see.
But.
So what is the actual role of?
That's what I, I'm. And that's what I'm trying to think about is the actual role of the board. I think the role of the board is to create the strategic plan and the role of the superintendent is then to assure, ensure that the dash plans comply with the strategic plan. And.
Cause I don't think our.
I don't think.
To be involved.
I, I'd have. I'd have to look at the dash plans to see what level of involvement the board could have in, in that issue. I'm not saying yes or no, I, I, I simply don't have.
Well, that's the present that part, I've read about, I read it. You know, there was language there, I'd have to look for it, mentioning the board.
And I wouldn't know that.
It may not be very explicit, it may not say, well, the board's gonna have to do, we'll do this and do that. I don't remember how. All I'm saying is that is that if we're gonna monitor progress, are we monitoring the progress on our strategic plan or are we monitoring the schools are doing, is they're monitoring progress by the, by the dash plan? They don't, they don't pay attention to your strategic.
Which is why, which is what I say, Dr. Guy, that it's, it's the superintendent's job to ensure that the dash plans align with the strategic plan. Otherwise, what, what good is the dash plan gonna do if it's not gonna align with the strategic? If nobody's following it?
Yeah.
I, I understand, I understand. I, I don't know, I'd have to look at the specific language to see.
Wait on that until we can get her to give us some feedback on that one, okay?
Yes, sir.
Review and approve a travel consultation process timeline outcomes. I'm assuming that's just a matter of, um, saying, okay, that's when do we get it started and, um, and all that kind of stuff that, that we've heard, you know, it's coming down the pipe. Beginning the process, process of strategic planning. Uh, I thought we needed to get, have, have that item where you present. You say this is the timeline for us to get started and who's gonna help us and we're gonna get, we're gonna get a consultant. Improve our decision making process in our board meetings. This came from the S F E, um, issue. And it just, it's, it's basically is that when the board, um, approves contracts, large contracts, it needs to know that it, that the money's been well spent. And so that means it needs to know what happened with the money, did it, did it achieve the results? Do we have a plan to evaluate whatever it is that we're, and I'll probably have to flesh it out a little bit more. There, so I'll create some bullets and then, and see if it makes some sense.
Cause I think that's, I think that was at the last meeting when Ms. Heneman was indicating that she had the, the, what was it, the sixty, ninety and a hundred and twenty day reporting that she had. Right, that's, she's got that in there.
We need, what we said. And this is the issue that I have from our council. Is that when we enter, I said that there was a clause, remember I sent some emails? And I don't know if you, I don't know if you saw that, I had sent them, I said, I voted no on the, on that, on that item. But it's more because I felt that, that the, that I was not satisfied with the, the, I with the, with our, this, our our commitment to evaluating the, the contract. And get the contract, it's done. But how does the board be assured that the contract is being faithfully implemented? And that's the part that I'm concerned about is that is that as part of the, as part of the city's obligation to us, they should have outlined a very specific, uh, evaluation process and timeline and stuff like that. So he would have it there, then he would then attach it to the, to the contract. So that he would already know that the evaluation process and monitoring process is in place. Well, we know we have to do that because they said that they were going to do that. And Heneman said that there is this, these, um, previous where they were trying to accomplish that. And, um, I'm quite concerned about that. I want to make sure that if we are to, to continue with this, with that contract, that they, that we do our due diligence in, in, in managing and monitoring and ensuring that he gets the necessary information and timely action so we know whether or not they're meeting the, are the expected needs of, uh, nutrition, food, and asset. But that also is involved with other things. We make, the school districts, this is my soapbox, school districts. I've worked in corporations where we don't spend money like this without something right. I find a lot of superintendents who will spend million dollars with very little. Like RFPs out, but when it comes to the creation of management plans, it's not as, it's not as, as, um, we're not trained enough to do that. What I wanna see is when we do enter a multi-million dollar contract, we actually have an evaluation that is already outlined. So we know, um, that we're gonna have, um, periodic reports on whether or not we do, when, um, the contractor and district are accomplishing what is expected of them in time and fashion. That actually written down, I'd like to see something that made for a little more discussion and use so that it's very simple, not complex, but simple enough for, for the district to, um, to ensure that every contract that is large in size will have a, a management plan that, that outlines very clearly all the, um, evaluated criteria to ensure that we are spending the money that we're supposed to and that, uh, that is accomplishing the, the needs that we, we've, um, engaged in. And that's what I wanna see.
I have a question regarding that for counsel. How much of that is the board allowed to actually be involved in? Because procurement law, talking about RFPs and everything like that is something that, you know, we really, unless it is our board legal counsel RFP, you know, I, my understanding was that we are very hands off, so what is, what is?
What you want is you as the board approves, even though there is an RFP process, the RFP defines the scope of the services that are being provided and provides for certain, um, specific provisions that the district wants to be included on as it relates to the provision of services. You usually do want to send your contract for a legal review and you can negotiate the terms of the contract before it is signed. And to the extent that the district has a policy that says for every contract over a certain amount, we need, you know, this, these metrics to be provided. That's something that, that, that the board can require. You, you don't, you don't necessarily have to negotiate each contract, but you can put in place a policy of practice. It says a superintendent is required to for every contract over this amount. Because you don't, you, you should understand every contract that comes in front of you. And, and if I remember correctly, the concern here is that we were extending a contract and we needed to extend the contract because we need, you know, every, the, the. cause we need, you know, every, the, the food had been purchased, everybody was relying on it. Um, and, but there is an ability to negotiate the terms of the contract to include, uh, some kind of provision. You want to make sure that it's clear that you have a way to terminate a contract if someone is not performing according to the contract. And you don't want a general statement like, you're not performing according to the contract and, and then not have a way to document whether or not they're doing that.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
I think it should be practice that outlines what must come to the board before it can.
Well, definitely, yeah, definitely over, anything over sixty thousand has to come to the board. But I don't know if you guys have a policy, some districts have a different limit. Some, some districts will say everything over five thousand dollars has to come to the board. Or everything that's not associated with the purchase of curriculum and food, um, that's over ten thousand dollars or over forty thousand dollars. It's really, I, I can go back and look at your policies to see if they say anything specific. I don't know that yours does. Um, the N M S B A Policy Service, if you haven't amended it, doesn't have that kind of limitation. Um, or otherwise doesn't say the co- the, the superintendent should negotiate contracts that should include X, Y, Z. But I can certainly look at your policies.
Yes.
Yeah, but A P S does their own policies, they don't use N M S B A policies. I will look at theirs as well, yeah.
The board needs to, um, discuss and agree on the different uses of opportunities that we have for food, using one term, this, what we do so far. I didn't realize we're using the steel, so we had, we had moved, uh, three. So we, the board needs to know what it is with three. That's just a discussion. Those are just some, those are just a few.
Thank you.
I also have, um, we also have a plan for how we're going to, has it brought, been brought to the, to Yadi Martinez? So we still don't have really anything in place that says we're meeting what they outlined, cause they outlined that we have to do. And I haven't seen anything, uh, regard, uh, regarding that. And my governor is asking for that as well. So I told him we'd bring it up to board meeting. And that I'm also the, I know we're not, I don't know why we shouldn't be, um, at the, uh, tribal consultation meetings, but that he requested, regarding, requested. I also received notice of the meeting so that I can make time to be there. And that wasn't, uh, it's my step, it was order, uh, the governor, so.
Did the governor receive notice of these meetings?
No.
No, they, they want Ms. Hunt Daly to be at the tribal consultation.
Okay, it's the other way around.
She's good.
Well, I think we need to just outline a lot of that stuff so that when you get started, you'll, everything will be.
And, uh, the P E D Office of Indian Education is really good about kind of, they, they've been very good lately about kind of directing what a consultation should be. Dr. Guy and I attended a session at the law conference.
And then, then it's, the one that's been said, but you. But, um, um, the, the two tribes, I don't know, they've been in a couple of elections, but then, I think they've been through that cause they get some visits and, and the tradition. Anyway, thank you.
All right. If there are no other agenda items, future agenda items, Ms. Widener.
I recommend that we adjourn this meeting because I will be here. Second, I'll second. If you moved forward.
Oh, perfect. It has, uh, been moved by Ms. Hunt Daly. Uh, and seconded by Mr. Hadamio to adjourn the meeting as presented. Mrs. Turley, roll call, please.
Shambho.
Yes.
Ms. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Hadamio.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Lee.
I, the motion carries and the board adjourned at ten twenty-two.
And we can keep these filed.